2025 and today's invocation will be given by Pastor Donnie Filippo, Pastor of the Gospel Center Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today in the name of Jesus. You said in your word, if any lack for wisdom, all we have to do is ask. So Father, we ask today that you give us the wisdom that we need to direct this city into the direction it needs to go for our citizens. Father, you tell us to lean not to our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge you, and you will direct our paths. So Father, today, give them the wisdom. Give them the wisdom for the finances. Give them the wisdom for the future and give them the wisdom for our citizens and the protection that they need. Father, we give you the praise, the glory, and the honor for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwood.
And Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
And as we, right before the proclamation, certainly want to extend our condolences to Councilwoman Sherwood on the loss of her sister since the last council meeting. So we are going to have two proclamations and three presentations. And for those that are here for the proclamation, we welcome all the photographs. We just ask that city staff gets the first one and then we'll stay put for as many as you'd like. And first proclamation is recognizing October 19th through the 25th, 2025, as International Infection Prevention Week. And accepting will be Kara Singleton, RNCIC, Krista St. Elizabeth Infection Prevention List, as well as the rest of the group from St. Elizabeth. All right, guys.
Here. One, two, three. Do you want to picture?
Yes.
Yay. One, two, three. One more. Okay. So in addition to International Infection Prevention Week, it is also International Hand Hygiene Day. So we shared some love with that. That little short song that we heard while we were playing was that full 20 seconds that appropriate hand hygiene actually should occur if you're washing your hands with soap and water. So just take, you can sing Twinkle Twinkle Little Star or The Alphabet to get through the 20 seconds. But it is an absolute honor to stand here today as we celebrate Infection Prevention Week 2025 along with International Hand Hygiene Day, a time when we shine a well-deserved spotlight on the incredible work of infection preventionists everywhere. Today, we proudly accept the city proclamation from the city and the City Council of Beaumont, recognizing the vital role infection prevention plays in protecting our community. On behalf of all infection preventionists, thank you for this meaningful acknowledgement. This year's theme, Stand Up, Unite, Protect, Prevent, and Prevail, perfectly captures the spirit of what we do every single day. Infection preventionists are the quiet force behind the scenes, working tirelessly to keep patients, families, and healthcare teams safe. Whether it's through education, surveillance, or simply reminding someone to wash their hands, we are committed to making a difference. Hand hygiene may seem simple, but it's one of the most powerful tools we have. It's a small act with a big impact, one that saves lives, prevents outbreaks, and keeps our healthcare environment safe and resilient. So today, let's celebrate the science, the dedication, and the people behind infection prevention. Let's continue to stand up together to protect our community and prevail over preventable harm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of October as National Disability Awareness Month here in Beaumont. Accepting will be Melanie Williams, Executive Director of Workforce Solutions Southeast Texas, Mark Duran, Deputy Director, Workforce Solutions Southeast Texas, and Dr. Harold Whitfield, Manager, Texas Workforce Commission Vocational Rehabilitation, or anybody else that is here to accept that. And if not, we, oh, yes, please come up.
Okay, right here. One, two, three. Get one more this way. Okay. Do you want me to take it for you? Sure. Okay, one, two, three. Got it. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor West, and members of the City Council. On behalf of the disability community, advocates, and inclusive employers across the city, I'm honored to accept this proclamation recognizing National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This month reminds us that individuals with disabilities are talented, capable, and vital contributors to our workforce and our communities. It also challenges us to continue breaking down barriers and creating opportunities that ensure full inclusion, access, and equity in employment. We deeply appreciate the city's recognition and ongoing support. Together, we can build a stronger, more inclusive economy where everyone has a chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have City of Beaumont Communications Update. And I do want to remind people, starting November 4th, our proclamations and recognitions will take place once a month at the first meeting of the month at 10:30 in the morning. And we will continue to push that information out. So it does affect on when you need to put in your information for the proclamations. Thank you.
Good afternoon. In this week's announcements, as you just heard from our mayor, we want to remind you that this is our last city council meeting to include those proclamations and recognitions. They will now happen once a month on the morning of the first council meeting of each month. These presentations will each begin at 10:30 in the morning, and they'll start, as he said, November 4th. Do you have a loved one who may wander or become disoriented? The Beaumont Police Department has launched the Take Me Home program to help safely reunite individuals with their families. This program is designed for those with Alzheimer's or dementia, autism spectrum disorder, intellectual or developmental disabilities, or any condition that makes communication or navigation difficult. Families can register by providing a photo, physical description, medical information, and emergency contacts. To register, go to beaumonttexas.gov/takeomehome. Early voting is now open for the citywide bond election coming up November 4th. Here's a look at what you'll find on the ballot. This November, Beaumont voters will see several bond propositions on the ballot. These will determine whether the city can fund certain major projects.
In the state of Texas, many cities do general obligation bonds. And they are for projects that you don't have in your general revenue to be able to complete. So if you want to do special projects, you go to the voters and let the voters decide.
Typically, anywhere from every five to seven years, municipalities have bond elections. Even school districts have them, typically more often than cities, every three to five years to provide infrastructure. So Beaumont hasn't had one in 42, 43 years, so it's time to have one.
The 2025 City of Beaumont Bond Package includes five propositions which comprise three categories. Prop A includes infrastructure with improvements to streets, sidewalks, and drainage across all four wards. Prop B covers facilities and public safety projects, things like a new animal care facility, a new fire station and police headquarters, a large multipurpose sports complex, a multipurpose community center in Alice Keefe Park, and public safety enhancements like cameras around the city that connect to our real-time crime center. Prop C builds on quality of life in the city with parks and recreation enhancements, including ADA-accessible playground equipment, upgrades to Terrell Park and the Botanical Gardens, as well as a field conversion at the athletic complex. Prop D would connect the riverfront to the city and add family-friendly amenities along the river. And Prop E would allow for economic development and ease traffic near Parkdale Mall by extending Point Parkway from Northwest Parkway to State Highway 105.
So for people asking, where did these projects come from? Well, some of them have been on the books and talked about for years. These are things that the city and residents have targeted that need change. However, we, with current budgets, we're not able to meet those changes.
We need to catch up on some infrastructure projects. We need to catch up on some quality of life projects. So this is a way of doing that.
If all five propositions are approved, the estimated impact for the average homeowner would be about 1425 per month. On the city's website, beaumonttexas.gov/bonds, and on the city's Facebook page pinned at the top, you can find a tax impact estimator to see exactly what it would mean for your family. If approved, these funds could only be used for the projects outlined in the bond package.
So when you read the propositions, it tells specifically what we're going to do with that money, and it is accounted for in that way.
It's not the city manager making a decision. It's not the city council making a decision. It's something that's decided by the voters and citizens of our community.
And it's important to note, by law, if there are propositions the voters don't approve, the city would not be allowed to issue debt for those projects for the next three years, which means they could be significantly delayed.
But we want to have everybody look at these propositions, understand them, and see if they believe they're important for the city.
To find out more, go to beaumonttexas.gov/bonds or beaumontbonds.com. These websites include project details, maps, cost breakdowns, and answers to frequently asked questions.
And this is just an additional tool. And it's a tool that you, as a resident, get to vote on, and you get to decide the future of our city.
Early voting begins October 20th and runs through October 31st. Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th. For all of your election information, including polling locations, go to beaumonttexas.gov/election. Adult Basketball League registration is now open. Register your team through October 24th, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center. Don't miss your chance to compete, connect, and enjoy a great season of basketball. Thanks to a generous donation by the Mabey McFadden Ward Heritage Foundation, the Jefferson Theater's Robert Morton Pipe Organ is fully restored, and you can hear it played live during a special showing of The Phantom of the Opera. That's Friday, October 24th at 7:00 p.m. as part of our 13 Nights of Halloween series at the Jefferson. Doors open at 6:00. The show starts at 7:00. Admission is just $10. You can get your tickets online or at the Beaumont Civic Center box office. Happy Halloween from Beaumont Animal Care. Before you head out for a night of tricks and treats, stop by for some paranormal fun and meet your forever best friend. Join us October 31st from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for our Halloween adoption event, where adoption fees are just $20 for one day only. With over 90 dogs, 30 cats ready to find their forever homes, now is the perfect time to adopt. Every adoption includes spay, neuter, microchip, vaccines, flea prevention, and dewarmer. All treats, no tricks there. Put on your costume, head over to the Beaumont Police Department for a spooktacular afternoon of treats, laughs, and Halloween fun. Join us for our fifth annual Trunk or Treat, a safe and not-so-spooky event for all ages. That's Sunday, October 26th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 255 College Street. And finally, you can celebrate Halloween at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center Friday, October 31st from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Come enjoy an evening of free and safe trick-or-treating and festive entertainment for the entire family. That's on Halloween night at the Sterling. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation of the Beaumont Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund, 2025 Actuarial Audit by Mr. Ryan Falls with Milliman.
Milliman.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Is someone clicking for me? Okay. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Members of the council staff, appreciate you having me here this afternoon. So my name is Ryan Falls. I work with Milliman. We're actuaries and consultants. I work with public pension funds across the state of Texas and across the country. We recently completed an actuarial audit, an independent actuarial audit. We are engaged by the city to conduct an actuarial audit or an actuarial peer review, if you will, of the pension fund and the financial results you're getting from the pension fund. And I know this council took up a pretty significant enhancement to the funding of the pension fund, the Fireman's Pension Fund, a few months ago. This is really an unrelated topic, just coincidental. These are both coming up about the same time. But they are correlated, and they do tie together. So jump into it here, just to let you know what the purpose is, why we're here, and what the primary results were, some of the areas of our review, and then any questions you have, I'm happy to help dive into them if that's, if y'all have some questions, want to know a little bit more. But most importantly, again, we just completed a peer review of the actuarial work that the fund, the fund's actuary, the fund has their own actuary. They produce financial results, and then the fund communicates those to the city for your financial statements and for your conversations about funding the plan. The state of Texas requires every pension fund over $100 million to conduct these actuarial peer reviews every five years. So we're here presenting that. This is the third time, I believe, that the city's gone through it. It's the city's requirement to do this peer review. So we looked at December 31st, 2024, as the most recent actuarial evaluation that the fund completed, which is basically the health checkup for the fund. And so what we did is basically dove in, looked at the assumptions and methods. If you've ever looked at a pension valuation, there's a blizzard of assumptions and methods that go into those calculations, and we just, we're here to give you an independent peer review, third-party analysis of what the numbers they're giving you. So the bottom line is the big there and the bold, this is what you want to see after an actuarial peer review. Then we reviewed the data, the experience, the documents, we replicated the liabilities and reviewed the reports, and we believe that that most recent actuarial evaluation is reasonable based on reasonable assumptions and methods, and the report complies with the actuarial standards of practice. The way this ties back to some of the recent decisions y'all made is just that this December 31st measurement that we reviewed is the basis of all the negotiations and discussions you had with the pension fund about enhancing the funding. So what basically I'm here telling you is that the foundation of those discussions you had recently with the pension fund and enhancing the funding of the plan, we reviewed those kind of bedrock valuation results that went into it. And so you started from a good place. Those were decision-useful numbers you received from the pension fund. So we have a, if you think of an audit, if there's a finding or a recommendation, usually that's a bad thing, something wasn't accounted for right. In an actuarial audit or actuarial review, there's just a lot of different things going on, and so anytime there's a, there's always room for improvement, enhancement. So we do have some recommendations, but the bottom line is everything was appropriate for you all to use as a city, to use those numbers you're getting from the pension fund to make decisions about the right way to finance the plan. So we looked at the liabilities, the assumptions of data, very briefly just powered through these, the liability. We were able to replicate the pension fund's actuaries' results within about $100,000. It's about as close of a replication as I've ever been a part of. And we had some recommendations for ways to enhance estimating what future active benefits will be when they ultimately retire, kind of enhance that calculation. We looked at the assumptions and gave the actuary a few suggestions around inflation, salary increases, and life expectancy, and future valuations, things to, from our perspective and our experience with the, in the industry, working with public pension funds. And the bottom, the data that went into it, the asset values, the money that the fund has on hand, were all appropriate. I'm going fast, just to, you have all the documentation with you. And then ultimately, the funding of the plan, again, this council took up some important enhancements to funding the FIRE Pension Fund. So the fund's actuary talked a lot about, you know, what types of contribution increases were needed to shore up the finances of the fund, and they did a good job communicating that, and y'all did a good job considering those issues. And finally, there's a, their documentation, their valuation report, it's all just communication. We had some recommended enhancements to their written communication about the valuation results. That last bullet doesn't include any impact to the valuation results. It's all just communication. So with that, that's the end of my prepared remarks. Went kind of fast. I just know y'all have been talking about the pension a lot lately. Just wanted to let you know that the numbers you're getting are good numbers, and you can rely on them and go forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the process we just completed.
Does anybody have any questions on council?
It's the result you want, so it should be easy breezy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, for those of you that are here for proclamations, recognitions, or presentations, and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And thank you for coming. But since I don't see anybody moving, I'm going to proceed. At the close of the meeting today, city council will adjourn into executive session to discuss or deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code to wit specifically Project Sport. And... Oh, yeah, we do. And I did. All right. And now we're going to have a presentation by text dot.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Anna Miadis. I've had the privilege of working with some of you as the deputy district engineer for the past three and a half years. I am now stepping into the role as district engineer. I guess you can say I really like challenges. So, but just want to say that I'm here to listen. We're gonna try and improve our communication. I think we've been doing that, been in this role for a whole 21 days. But we've, we've been trying to improve on the social media communication and looking forward to the collaboration and the partnership with the city of Beaumont. I know we've got a lot of construction in this city. Just would like to ask y'all to bear with us. Construction is a, you know, it's troublesome for the traveling public, but it's, you know, we're trying to improve mobility. It's going to be great when it's finished. It's just we've got to get through the construction. So appreciate it. We're, we're going to do everything we can to try and minimize the impact of the traffic. So anything that y'all can do to help us, we would appreciate it. Today, I do have my PIO, Tanya Avila, my management analyst, Sarah DePray, and Dave Collins, my area engineer, and Richard Bradley, the assistant area engineer, are going to give a brief presentation on current projects in Beaumont. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anna. Thank you, Mayor West, council members in City of Beaumont. So what we have here today, we have a, oh, this, I guess this doesn't work. Thanks, Richard. Oh. All right. So go agenda here. We're going to talk about the I-10, US 69 interchange projects and our upcoming future projects within the next three or four years. As you can see here on this display, the Beaumont Area Office, we cover three counties, Tyler, Hardin, Jefferson County. I got a zoom up here, Jefferson County. And here's, yay, I can bounce here. Here are some projects we're working on right now. So I-10, right here, between, pretty much from Hampshire Road all the way up to Walden Road, we got a probably completion date about early, mid 2027. Of course, you know, we got the interchange job right here, but we're looking at somewhere around late 2030, early 2031. And given some good highlights, we have completed the furniture roads jobs early summer this year. This is this red area here. That's from Spur 93 to Spur 380. So that's been completed. Richard's going to talk about some other furniture jobs coming up from Spur 93 to 124. Also not shown on here, early this year, as y'all know, we have completed the overlay of the main lanes, where we configured to six, three lanes in east direction, or six lanes highway, from all the way from Delaware to Tram Road. And also, we overlaid the furniture roads, too, right in the city of Beaumont, around Parkdale Mall up through Delaware. All right. So move along. Kind of mentioned this last... Okay, thank you. I don't know where the button is. All right. Some of the highlights here. So up here on the top here, we have, we're going to do some connectivity around Delaware Street on the furniture roads. Of course, the main focus is that we are expanding from a four-lane divided highway to a six-lane divided highway. And a couple other good highlights we have here is down here on the Cardinal Drive project. We are continuing, and when we are constructing right now, you can see we're connecting the furniture roads from Tinseltown and Papadoz going across Hillibrand Bayou to tie into Sam's Club and Elagante in that area. And also, we're going to continue off of BNSF over 124. And I'm going to show some pictures. In fact, we just poured a bridge deck today that y'all can see. So we are connectivity of the furniture roads over there on US 69, north and south. Here are some previous pictures. As you can see, we're doing some foundations right here. This is around, pretty much the East Tex Freeway. We're looking at some foundations of I-10 East and some of the connectors here. You can see how deep the foundations of the drill shafts are. Here are some of the box culvert drainings that we are placing around 11th Street. Continue on here. This is the drainage we have got on the eastbound furniture road as we get past Harrison Street. And here are some more of the footings that we're pouring around Louisiana Street. Okay, so these two pictures right here, this is the overpass at BNSF around 124. This is about a couple weeks ago. And what we call this is a PMDs and panels, and these are the ivies that go across. As you can see, this is what we have today. So we have poured our first bridge deck over 124, or over BNSF. So we are continuing to pour that, and we continue to work in that area. Some other projects here, pictures as we go on with construction. This is some of the connector caps and columns for the direct connect on the Cardinal Drive as we go to I-10 69 North, and it connects to I-10 East and West. Right here is a temporary shoring wall that we, it's around the Pods area, and this is the build of the furniture road bridge over Hillibrand Bayou. And here's some more. These are a little bit older. This is probably about three or four months. These are some of the foundations on the Cardinal Drive that you just saw previously. And you can tell how deep this is in this area right here. Here are some of the caps and columns that we're pouring for those direct connects. Like I said, this is probably about a couple of months ago. The first few pictures are just recently, within about a week or two. And this is the Washington, oh, thank you. Appreciate it. If I talk too fast, just tell them I'll start slowing down here a little bit. This is the retinal wall right there at Washington Street. This is where one of our connectors that we connected. We have finished this wall already, and we are continuing in that area also. So I will, is there another green button? Okay. So I'm going to hand it off to Richard, but these are our kind of progress meetings we got going on. So just as I noted, we got a lot of construction around the East Tex, around 11th Street and Delaware, building a lot of the foundations and footings. We are doing some drainage improvements still on the eastbound furniture road on I-10 from Calder to Pass... We are doing some drainage improvements still on the eastbound furniture road on I-10 from Calder to pass Harrison. As y'all know, we shut down one lane going westbound. We are building some temporary detours to improve that drainage in that area, and we continue the construction around Hillibrant. So that's a whole bunch, a lot of talking in a couple of minutes. I'm going to hand it off to Richard, and then we'll open up for some questions.
All right, so as Dave mentioned, I'm Richard Bradley, I'm his assistant out of the Beaumont area office. It's nice to meet quite a few of y'all. I apologize, I don't believe I was able to make it to the last meeting, but I do look forward to working with y'all going forward. What I have prepared for you today is unfortunately not going to be as picturesque as what Dave had just went through. The projects that I'm here to talk about have yet to kick off. So just to give you a taste as to what we have coming down the pipeline with some of our larger projects, just going through the list. The first two projects that we have up here on US 69, they are both going to be rehabilitations, and they're both going to be along the furniture roads adjacent to US 69, between Erie Street and Florida Street, going back to 124. So similar to what we did to the furniture roads earlier this year in the Lamar area, where we tore out all that old deteriorated concrete, and we replaced it with new smoother concrete and improved the drainage. That's going to be very similar to what we do with these two sections of furniture road also. And once these two sections are completed, then we'll have gone through and replaced all the furniture roads between 124 going all the way down to the 347 area, all the way down towards the Lamar area. The next project, let's see, that is a Spur 380 project. This one is also going to be a rehabilitation of the roadway. We're going to be doing some full depth repairs, some base repairs, joint seal, as well as an overlay. And also, if you recall from driving through that area, between the Red Needle to Jim Gilligan Way in the median, there is a double sided metal beam guard fence. We're going to be taking that out and replacing it with a concrete traffic barrier, that center CTV that you see along, say, I-10 or US 69. The purpose behind that is the concrete barrier provides additional protection for motorists traveling the opposite way, in addition to it being just a bit easier to maintain in the long run also. Let's see, the next project, an FM 365 bridge replacement, that is closer to South County, the Port Arthur area. We are just going to be replacing a bridge over Road Air Gully with that one. Below that, we have a restoration on SH 124, in almost similar kind to the two projects on the US 69 furniture road. Being that the furniture roads are made of concrete and 124 is an asphalt road, we're also going to be doing a similar kind of project in which we come through, we do base repairs, we do full depth repairs, and we're also going to be doing an overlay on that roadway as well. So there are some patches on 124 that can be pretty hairy at times. This project is definitely going to look at extending the life of that pavement as it nears, you know, the end of its lifetime. Below that, we have a widening project on US 69. This is the project that would take the three lane configuration, three lanes going north and three lanes going south, between Tram Road all the way back to I-10. We're going to extend that configuration from Tram Road going all the way up to the split, just south of Lumberton. That project is going to be a very good mobility project for the commuters that travel from the northern counties down into Jefferson County for, for work, and also as they, you know, head back to, to their homes at the end of the day also. Let's see, below that, we have a US 69 safety improvement project. This is going to be a multifaceted project. We're going to be looking at constructing some paved shoulders through the area, all the way from Major Drive out to the county line. So we'll have new paved shoulders. We're going to be looking at doing some safety improvements to the crossovers, as well as we're looking at adding some new signalization at Keith Road and Wooton Road, I believe, as well as some additional safety lighting. And I believe we're also looking at including some median barrier there also for additional safety measures. And then below that, second to last, on FM 364, a widening, a widening project. This is that small section of Major Drive between I-10 and 124. What we're going to be doing here is we're going to be widening that section to include a center left turn lane, and I believe we're also going to be looking at increasing the width of the shoulders through this area also. And then right below that, this is another project out towards the Port Arthur area, in similar kind to what we're doing on the Rainbow Bridge with bridge maintenance. After that finishes, we're also going to be looking at the Veterans Memorial Bridge to do some additional bridge maintenance. All right, and that is, I guess in a nutshell, the scope of the larger projects that we have coming down the pipeline. But if there were any questions, you know, Dave or myself would be happy to field them for you.
Well, thank you, and I know we are going to probably have some questions. I just want to applaud y'all on coming before us regularly, and also the benefit this will be for our kids and grandkids. And it certainly can be an inconvenience for us at this time, but Interstate 10 and Highway 69 are such vital parts of southeast Texas and bring a lot of cars through every day. So thank y'all for that, and Councilman Turner?
Yeah, first and foremost, thank y'all. I, I know it's not easy to stand in front of people when everybody looking at the construction, and I understand, with growth comes pain. So I get it, and I understand, I kind of don't share those same sentiments. But I did have a question, with our Tech Dot, is it one contractor working on everything? Or is it bid it out to multiple contractors doing all these projects at different times?
So a lot of, the interchange job, it is one contractor. So it's broken into two sections, so we've got East Tex, kind of a north section around Delaware Street and 11th Street. Then we got Cardinal Drive, which is around the Elagante that goes down 69, going to Port Ar, to Port Arthur, Lamar. So that is one contractor in that area. From Walden Road going to 365, that is a different contractor. That's where we're widening the interstate from three to, four to six lanes. Then from 365 to Hillibrant, that goes back to Williams Brothers. So we, for the big contracts, that's what, we have those two contractors, William Brothers and Johnson Brothers.
Mr. Collins, did you have Melissa don't want to slide the different contractors?
No, it didn't show it, no, but I could, I could kind of talk about it if you want.
I saw some contractors on one.
Let's go back here.
That one.
Okay. Oh, it does, how about that? That's great, okay, so that's, that's good, I appreciate, Mr. Williams. So, okay, so yeah, right here, this is the furniture road, so this is Texas Materials, or previously long named APAC. APAC also did that widening from six lanes from Delaware, it's not showing here, but from Delaware up to Tram Road. They're also the contractor that did the widening right there. I'll just kind of talk about this area. Right here, we got Texas Materials, which we're going to be finishing December, I apologize, I didn't mention that earlier. This is Norfolk Bay on 124, that's also Texas Materials. There's Johnson Brothers, as I've mentioned, and Williams Brothers on these two jobs right here. We got Regal that's doing Maine's job. We've got ISI that's 347 up here in Port Arthur, and we've got a few other jobs, but those are some of our local. We're on a bidding system, and the contractor gets a little bid, that's the one that boards the contract.
Yes, the, the reason I asked, because I, I noticed the delays. The reason I asked is I noticed the delays, and I understand that even in the city of Beaumont, you know, sometimes we have change orders and delays. So that's to be expected, but when I was riding through Dallas, I was out there with my wife a few weeks back, and it actually had the contractor's name and phone number highlighted on the road. So when you had issues with, whether it be a pothole or something that may not have been too right. Honestly, I gotta give Corey credit, he's done a good job when it comes to putting it out there on things that could be better. But, you know, I think it would be advantageous if we did that in Beaumont and had our contractors do that, because honestly, y'all, we all can't see everything. When people see things, the quicker you report it, the quicker it can be addressed. So that's just something I seen in that Dallas area, and it kind of stood out like a sore thumb, like, and people actually go on the internet talking about how they were using that number, and things were happening very quickly.
Yeah, right now, on our sheets, we don't show that. The contractor does put their company board name, usually with the address or appeal box. We did not specify a phone number at this time. It might be something we want to look at Dallas, maybe implement here. But if there is some potholes, Councilman Crenshaw does it quite a bit, I should, I don't mind, notify us, we will get those fixed, absolutely. It is important that we keep our travelers safely as they drive our highways.
And I, I had a few more follow ups. I noticed there was a change in leadership, so first and foremost, congratulations and welcome. We talked about things like maintenance on the freeways. Currently, the city of Beaumont, we do do the maintenance on the side of the freeways. And I know Tech Dot gives a certain portion, but we, we do budget a significant amount of money that we don't recover the kind of maintenance and integrity of the aesthetics that we want our city to look like when people travel. Since, since it is new leadership, maybe could we kind of re-explore that, that deal of that relationship?
Yeah, absolutely, we're willing to have that conversation, you know, just communicate, have that conversation. Definitely willing to, to explore what options we have. You know, we, we as a state, as a state agency, do have to abide by certain rules, but, but we definitely can, can look at some out of the box ideas. I'm, I'm willing to always try something different, you know, if things aren't working, let's, let's try something different. If that's not working, we'll pivot, so absolutely willing to work with y'all to see if there's alternatives to the way we're doing things now.
Yes, ma'am, and my last question, similar to the aesthetics. The previous Tech Dot director was saying he wasn't big on medians in the section aesthetics. It was kind of like a boring view, not similar to like the Mount Bell views and the more, you know, beautification projects we see. I am supportive that we do explore working relationships to kind of get the aesthetics of our appearance with our city and Tech Dot. I, I do support that, I'm one of seven, but maybe if we can see what we can do to work together to approve the aesthetics, you know, like, I, I like the red, but I like it over there by Lamar and not by I-10, but I do like the red. But I just want to know if it's something you guys would be open to as well, to see if we can revisit it, because again, I know there was his sentiment, but it's a new regime, and I'm looking forward to working with you and hearing your ideas.
Well, well, just to be fair with, to him, you know, on the East Tex and the Cardinal jobs, we did add a lot of aesthetics to those projects. You know, everything done previously, you know, is, is hard for us to, to, to change that. But moving forward, that is the direction the Beaumont district will be moving into, is looking at, at aesthetics. You know, I, we do, we do need to work with our cities and, and our counties when we do that aesthetics is, is who's going to maintain, like, if we do, let's see if we do vegetation, if we do plants, and, you know, that, the, the maintenance of that becomes an issue. But absolutely willing to partner with, with the city of Beaumont to, to see how we can improve aesthetics. I want, you know, I want as much as y'all for, for our roadways to look, you know, to have some aesthetic views like other, like other districts have. I, I don't know if, if Dave went through the, there's a 69 project from Lamar in 2028. We are looking at, you know, at adding aesthetics to that, working with Lamar. You know, we want to add some aesthetics to our retaining walls, you know, just, just whatever we can do within, within our regulations. So we definitely willing to have that conversation, willing to include y'all in, in those decisions. And, but we also need some partnership from, from cities and counties to get that done, so absolutely.
Thank you. Sure.
Just one thing, again, congratulations, Ms. Maharis, on your
Thank you.
On your promotion. We look forward to working with you and cooperating and collaborating with you on these projects. We mentioned maintenance, have we completed the MOU? We're in the middle of negotiating the MOU.
I think it's, it's still in, in draft form.
So I think this is an opportunity to, to talk and negotiate some things, because we are in the middle of negotiating the MOU as we speak.
You can explain what an MOU is.
It's a memorandum of understanding, where it's an agreement with Tech Dot, the city, to who's going to be responsible for what along the highways. Are we going to mow, or they going to mow, who's going to fix potholes, you know, different. We just have an agreement on who's responsible for the maintenance of the different things along the highways, state highways.
You done, Councilman Turner? All right, I know everybody may have, so I'm going to go to Councilman Hilliard, then I'm going to go to Councilman Durio, and then I'll come to this side, so.
Again, I want to say welcome and congratulations, and, and thank you for being here. We, you know, this is, it's really awesome to have y'all here and to keep our citizens updated. And the one thing that I'm hearing a lot about, is there any way we can get these blinking lights at Washington fixed? It seems to be a big concern, especially for people that are trying to avoid the Calder area, using the Washington when we have the blinking red lights, and at five o'clock and at 8:30 in the morning, it's, it's pretty crazy. So is there, I understand that, that we control the lights, but there is a short or something in the lights that when it rains, it causes the lights to go back to blinking? Is there anything we can do to get those blinking lights back to working like they should?
So in my short 21 days that I've been in this role, I've been working with the city of Beaumont, the, the traffic section. Actually, my very first day, I think I met, maybe, maybe second day, met with the city of, city of Beaumont. It is the city of Beaumont's traffic lights, but it's our construction that is affecting the traffic lights. So I pledge to partner with the city of Beaumont. We've been using our traffic engineering consultant to help look at timing, look at what we can do to that light. I believe there's a, a part that the Washington traffic light is needed, it's been ordered. But we are definitely partnering, that is how I, I, I would like to work moving forward, is partnering with the city, because it is a, a major project in the heart of the city of Beaumont. So although it is the, the city's traffic light, we, we need to partner with each other, because our construction is, is affecting some of the, the timings and the, and, you know, the mobility through those furniture roads. I, I will say, when we changed the traffic on the westbound, a couple of those lights went to blinking. We've, we've looked at that, our traffic engineers have studied that, and then actually, the blinking is, is actually working better than the traffic light. So I'm definitely willing to sit down with the city and explain, you know, and, and show them the data of, of why, you know, what, you know, what the best option is. My, my goal is to make sure that, that we, we try to minimize the, the impact to the traveling public. And so just working together with the city, I think we can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Durio? Thank you, Councilman Hilliard.
Yeah, I may have missed it, but I seem to remember at one time you said 124, y'all were changing to two lanes each way?
124, two lanes. A four lane.
A four lane, changing it to a four lane, at one of your prior presentations.
124 itself is always going to be two lanes in each direction. Now, we're going to rehab all of 124. We have two projects, one that Richard shows goes from 69 to pretty much LaBelle Road to 364. We do have another one that's set out a few more years, which is outside the three years, about four or five years out. We're going to rehab from, pretty much from 365 all the way back to 364, and that's going to be rehab. But we, we hadn't, we didn't have any plans to go to four, four lanes, at least I don't remember of any.
You said two lanes each way?
No, one lane each way, two, okay, so let me re-clarify. So when I say a two lane highway, that's really one lane in each direction. When I say a four lane highway, that's a two lanes each direction, and if it's a six lane highway, I really mean three lanes in each direction. So 124 will always stay a two lane highway, one lane. Well, excuse me, not always, depends, it would depend what traffic studies show, and if it doesn't increase, we might go to four, but right now, it's not planned.
No, one other thing, because I travel this route a lot, when you mentioned potholes, it's on Interstate 10, between 69 and all the way probably to Calder, there's quite a few of them, because I, I've hit them a few times myself.
Yeah, so please reach out to my office, we'll definitely try to get those handled as quick as possible. We are trying to maintain that system, like Anna and Richard said, we are in an old system that's, you know, is coming to its life expectancy. So we are trying to keep it going. Also, as Ms. Anna said, we are trying to look at it out of the box to try to keep our area going here. So we are just kind of things out of the box that we are looking at. So there is a bad section, and Councilman Crenshaw also brought it to our attention too, we're working on it. The connector, US 69 North to I-10 West, so there's a huge blowout, which we're doing So there's a huge blowout, which we're doing a plan to do a full day repair in the next couple of days. And then we want to mill and overlay because that's used, that was old PFC and that asphalt's unraveling. So we need to get a better surface to keep that traffic going out there smoothly and restrike that area too. We did that about two years ago. If y'all remember, I-10 West to 69 South, all that asphalt was kind of torn up and falling apart. And that's where we mailed all that out and overlaid it because we need to last for about three or four more years as traffic keeps on driving that area. But if there's something pop up, please reach out. We are going to try to hit that as quick as possible.
And one last question. Were you saying that the flashing red lights are better than if it was regular red, yellow, green as far as the traffic flow?
I believe it's North Street is what they were looking at.
No, 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 talking about that Washington Boulevard.
No, not Washington. No, Washington, we're, we're getting, there's a part that's missing that, that went out in those lights. And so there, it's, it's been ordered. It's, that traffic light needs to be fixed. That traffic light does not think it'd be in flashing. The intersections, it's, it's, it's not a complete T. And so I've, I've said through that intersection, I've seen accidents about to happen. We have a lot of close calls. I've seen, I've seen some accidents there. Flashing red at Washington is not what, you know, what the traffic engineers recommend. It needs to be fixed, but they, they are also looking at timing it so that it works better. Because I know a lot of the public saying that the flashing red, you're moving fast, that it's got better movements. So we're working on getting the, the timings on those, on those lights corrected so that, so that it, the lights actually are more efficient.
So that's, is that something that the city is going to do?
That, we're going to do that together. We're going to give them the, we, we have had people in the field with the traffic, the city of traffic employees. My consultant has been in there, working in the cabinets. We'll be giving them the, that, I'm not a, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do have people that are experts at this. They, they know what the timings need to be for the, for the lights. They do, they'll do what's called different studies. So they, and they configure the lights so that it's, it's optimized.
And, and this part that's on order, that's going to fix it?
Yes, it should. But we're going to continue to monitor it, continue to, to, I, I pledge to have my people continue to help the city, you know, partner with the city so that we can get, so this light can, can get back to working and optimize as much as possible.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Anybody? Councilman Crenshaw?
I'll be brief. I just would like to say how remarkable the change with Tech Dot has been communicating with me and addressing the needs of this city since the last time Tech Dot came before this council. And Anna, you know, thank you and congratulations to your promotion, for your promotion. And I don't think Dave ever thought he would receive daily texts and emails from me. And, but we, we've fixed a lot of things together and y'all are doing a great job. I'm so excited about the, the true aspects for partnerships moving forward. I can think of four or five projects right now off the top of my head that we've already talked about, that we're going to get together and try to fix things together with our amazing Public Works Director and, and get the ball rolling and really bring some change to this city that is going to make our roads safer and better for all. So thank you so much to the, the effort that y'all are putting forward and the enhanced communication and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crenshaw. Councilman Turner?
Lastly, Mr. Manager, between Tech Dot and the city, is there any kind of way we can get a joint statement that explains the Washington Boulevard situation? Because what's taking place is, you know, I had a citizen who reached out to me and, you know, when she reached out to Tech Dot, Tech Dot stated, you know, it's the city light, which is the truth. But then on the flip side, you know, we can't actually move forward fixing the city light because we waiting on the part. So most, most people may be at work, they may not have the capability to watch this, they may want to go back and watch it, but it's a long meeting. So is there any way we can put out a joint meeting, I mean, a joint messaging saying, stating what's really going on because people are a little confused about it?
Sure, and we should be able to do that by tomorrow. That's reasonable. And we'll get Councilman update on this part, whatever this part is and when we expect it in and when we have that fixed.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Turner, and thank y'all for the thorough presentation.
Thank you.
And now, we're done with our proclamations and presentations. And for those that are leaving, thank you for coming. And I do want to remind people, since I got out of order, that at the close of this meeting, City Council will adjourn into executive staff, executive session to discuss or deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code to its specifically Project Sport. And as we move into public comments, I would also like to say, we did cover it. Our communications director did a great job. I've received several direct questions regarding the different propositions and being able to move money around. And there's been some things circulating on the internet that we can move money if a proposition is approved to another proposition. That is incorrect. We will follow the law. The money has to stay within the propositions. The flip side to that is, you know, we have estimated cost for whether it's the fire station, police station, you can look through there again, estimated cost. And if there's money between those projects can be shared, if something came in under or something came in over, those can be shifted. Those would be approved by this council, obviously, and any oversight or facilitation committee would be reviewing that. But again, it would stay within the proposals, A, B, C, D, and E. And our city attorney has a face, so in case I'm saying something wrong, please address it. And, and I'll stop with that. So she, my wife gives me that same signal. I recognize it. So now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, regular agenda items one through eight or any other topic. Citizens wishing to speak on items nine and 10 will also be given an opportunity to speak during the public hearing, but if you choose to speak at the beginning, you may. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state if it hasn't been stated. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. And please be reminded that we cannot respond to your comments at that time. However, we will follow up with you and somebody from staff might be with you before you leave the meeting.
Delala Johnson, 2840 Glenwood Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
I'd like to extend my condolences with you, our community, our heart is with you. And I have a paper to pass out. What I need to get this to. We're having our first annual farmers market in Pear Orchard in Ward Four. We've been working hard for six years on our community garden. And so we hope to see you guys out there. Our goal is to teach the community to be self-sufficient, how to change the composition of the soil in our community, how to add more trees to our community and stuff to change the quality of the air. So we've been working hard for six years and we've gotten a lot of support from different people on the board. And what we're going to do on Saturday, we're going to open up at 10 o'clock to the city officials so you guys can come in comfortably and see what we're doing from 10 to 11. And then we're going to open up to the community at 12 o'clock. So we're going to have vegan cheese, vegan boudin, we're going to have fruits and vegetables. We're going to have some other foods as well too. And so we want to encourage you to purchase a pumpkin for a dollar and the proceeds of the money is going to go to Beaumont United for project graduation. So this is just the beginning of many things that we want to do inside of the community. We want to change that whole street and show that community how everybody can keep their yard cut, grow their own fruits and vegetables, keep the neighborhood clean. And our hopes is that that becomes contagious to the whole Fort Ward area. And we hope, we see, we hope to see you guys out there on Saturday. I know there's a lot going on that day, but even if you stop by for 10 minutes, that means a lot to us and all our volunteers and people that helped put this together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Rose Rendell, 6550 Lexington Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Today I'm going to tell you some news. Because of ongoing legal cases, I will be omitting the names. On October 7th, immigration officials in Beaumont once again heroically cleaned up our streets by detaining an aging grandfather on his way to work. They also valiantly harassed several citizens and legal residents with suspiciously brown skin who were told that they resembled criminal illegal aliens and would need to show their papers. Later, they showed up at the Jefferson County Probation Office to defend America by arresting responsible people showing up for their legal appointments. They were able to prevent a father, husband, and permanent legal resident from stealing the job he was weeks away from starting by refusing to allow him to produce documents that would prove he has a legal right to be in the country that he has called home since he was two years old. He is not the first documented person detained by ICE in Beaumont. The local immigrant community has sounded the alarm, stating that many of their documented family members have been detained. Being born on U.S. soil to parents born on U.S. soil is no longer good enough either. When a man's wife contacted the Montgomery Processing Center in Conroe, she was told by someone over the phone that the man's child, a citizen born on U.S. soil to a mother who is also a citizen born on U.S. soil, would probably be located, detained, and deported too. In June, Abbott signed Senate Bill 8 into law requiring that Texas Sheriff's Departments enter into agreements with ICE to support immigration enforcement. Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, eager to be more helpful to the federal government than the community they supposedly serve, immediately signed their contract a full 18 months before they were legally required to do so. They say all it takes for evil to succeed is for good people to do nothing, but I disagree with that. Evil is most successful when it convinces everyday people to play small little parts to keep the gears running. Things like unnecessarily signing agreements early, letting ICE ambush people in our government offices, and using local police departments to lay bait and switch traps that result in ICE mysteriously showing up 20 seconds into a routine traffic stop. That happens in our community. Is this the America you want to live in? One where people who forget their wallet at home may wake up the next day in a holding cell, hours from being put on a flight to a foreign prison? One where even documented people and citizens aren't safe from being deemed too close to the profile of the undesirable minority? Is this our America? Is it the racist, ignorant cruelty of current federal policy that represents us? Or is what represents us how we dutifully play our small part in keeping those gears running? I'm asking my city to stop playing their part.
Chance, 932 West Lucas, Beaumont, Texas.
George Retz is a 25-year-old U.S. Army veteran who served a tour in Iraq. On July 10th, while on his way to work as a security guard in Southern California Cannabis Farm, he was detained by federal immigration agents despite telling them that he was an American citizen and that his wallet and identification were in his nearby, nearby car. Leo Venegas, who was born in the United States, was first detained in May at a construction site by armed men in camouflage. Two weeks later, Venegas was arrested again on another private construction site when another immigration patrol saw him working and assumed without reasonable suspicion that Leo was undocumented. Both times, Venegas told the officer he was a citizen and showed them his real ID. ICE should not be able to violate the rights of citizens with impunity. Sudhu Vedam was wrongly imprisoned for 43 years for a murder he did not commit. 14 days ago, he won his freedom. ICE arrested him the next day. He received multiple degrees during his time at Huntington State Correctional Institute. Sudhu is in fact the first prisoner in the history of Pennsylvania to get a master's degree while incarcerated. Yet even while having been exonerated for the murder, he had a 40-year-old LST possession that ICE found. He had pled guilty and received probation 43 years ago, but that's all ICE needed. ICE wants to deport Sudhu to India. He left India when he was nine months old. This is an injustice. This is a horrible reflection on our country, our culture, and our government. ICE should not be able to violate the rights of immigrants with impunity. Ward Sleek, 22 years old, was married on January 31st. She was detained at a Miami airport in February after returning from her honeymoon in the U.S. Virgin Islands. Around the time of her wedding, she applied for a green card and successfully cleared the initial stage of process. She is Palestinian descent, born in Saudi Arabia, but holds no citizenship there. When she was eight, family came over here on a visa, applied for asylum, that was denied. But they couldn't be deported because they have no country, they have no citizenship anywhere. So they were required to stay here or they were allowed to stay here and placed under an order of supervision. She graduated from high school, got a bachelor's degree, launched a wedding photography business. She was held for over five months in detention before finally being released. ICE should focus on the criminals and gang members, not good people doing honest work. In June, Hays County, county commissioners passed a resolution calling for humane treatment in the process of immigrants within the county.
Thank you, sir.
I would ask you all to do the same.
Bill Robinson, 5295 Gil Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay, as the other individuals have already mentioned, there's been a lot of distressing incidents with immigrants and ICE. At one time, these were rare, unusual, abnormal. Today, they've become the norm. The United States is a nation of both laws and promises, and our history and identity consist of how well we either fulfill those laws, those promises, or we break them. Currently, we're in the process of breaking them. We made promise to immigrants, to people coming here, that if they come here and they go through the process, they can live here and they can have better economic economies, stability, safety, education. We made that promise. We set up laws that guide how that is accomplished. Today though, we are not only breaking those promises, we are breaking those laws. We are failing our ideals, our promises, our humanity, and our people. It's happening all across the nation and it's happening here in Beaumont. As I said, we are a people of laws and promises and humanity. And if we want to remain the same, then we need to take actions, no matter how small, to fight this, to stop it, and to rectify it. Thank you. Thank you.
Abigail Morales, 1045 Church Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Councilwoman Mayor, please excuse my nervousness. My name is Abigail Morales, and I'm a Beaumont resident and a U.S. citizen. But I came to this country and this city as an undocumented child. Growing up, I knew the fear that someone I loved might be taken not because they were bad people, excuse me, but because borders and papers seem to matter more than families and love. And that fear really never leaves you. In fact, for many in the immigrant community, it has only grown stronger. That fear isn't imagined. It is real, and it is something that is happening here in Beaumont and families are living through now. In fact, just a few weeks ago, immigration agents detained a man in our city. I don't know every detail about his case, but I've seen what moments like that do to a family. They leave behind fear, confusion, silence, and I'm here because silence can't be our answer. The man that was detained has a little girl, just nine years old, who sees him as her father. She wrote a letter, and with her family's permission, I want to share it. I've removed the names for their privacy. Dad, I miss you. You are like a dad to me. If you come back, I will feel excited and I will be happy. I cry every day for you. I am his daughter. I love him. Please let him go home to his family. Please, please, God, let him come back to us. Those are the words of a child, a nine-year-old, heartbroken and scared. Let her letter remind us what is at stake when families are separated. The innocence that is lost, the fear that lingers, and the deep ache that no law or paperwork can measure. And this is just one story. There are many families, many neighbors, living quietly with the same fear for our city, in our city. We may not know every story, but they are here. It isn't about politics. It is about people. It is about what kind of community we want to be. Here in Beaumont, you, our city leaders, help set the tone, showing that you care can start small by making sure that our public spaces are safe for everyone, by being transparent about how our city cooperates with ICE, and by standing with families when they're afraid. Because if one child in our community is crying herself to sleep, scared that her family might be torn apart, or praying for someone she loves to come home, that is not someone else's problem. It is all of ours.
Kristy Delaserta, 4590 Kenneth Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I was completely unprepared for this. My kids called me until last minute.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Are you wanting to speak on a dilapidated structure?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be towards the end. I'm sorry. Colton Sharp, 5150 Plant Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Councilwoman Sherwood, you have our deepest condolences and prayers. Mayor, Council, and City Manager, I'm speaking today to follow up on an email I previously sent to each one of you regarding the current conditions of the tennis complex located on College Street. As we prepare to host the Southland Conference Tennis Tournament in April 2026, we have an opportunity, not just to improve a facility, but to reshape how people see Beaumont. When you look online, there's a mixed picture of our city. Residents and visitors often mention Beaumont's affordable living, friendly people, and community spirit. But there are also recurring concerns about crime, limited attractions, and a lack of things to do compared to other cities. These comments influence how outsiders and even our own residents perceive the quality of life here in Beaumont. And this event presents a tremendous opportunity for the city to showcase our community to a national audience. By revitalizing the tennis complex, we can begin to change the narrative. This ESPN televised event gives us the chance to highlight a different story, one of progress, one of investment, and one of pride. When viewers see well-maintained courts and vibrant facilities, they'll associate Beaumont with excellence and hospitality. When visitors come for the tournament and experience clean, safe, and welcoming spaces, they'll leave with a positive impression that ripples through word of mouth and social media. And when residents see our city taking pride in its public facilities, it builds a sense of ownership and optimism that encounters, that counters the negative perception circulating online. Furthermore, Lamar University's success is Beaumont's success. The university is a cornerstone of our community, and its athletic achievements reflect directly on our city. When Lamar hosts and performs well in front of a national audience, it strengthens Beaumont's reputation as a city that supports excellence in education, sports, and community life. By ensuring the tennis complex meets championship standards, we're not just supporting the university, we're investing in the image and future of Beaumont itself. So don't think that this is just about resurfacing courts. It's about rebranding Beaumont as a city that invests in itself, supports athletics, and creates experiences worthy of being televised on national platforms like ESPN. So thank you for your leadership and for consistently, and for considering this timely matter. We have a chance to make a strong impression on national, on the national stage, and take actions now will ensure that we seize this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, City Council, other concerned citizens, other present, other city employees. I hate to ride on the same track each time I come here for the last three meetings. But the other day, I received a water bill with a $10 late charge. I know I've expressed to you before that I paid the same water bill one day at the due date. I'm here to inform you that this particular $10 charge, I'm going to place in escrow. I'm not going to pay it to the city. Okay? And at the same time, I'm going to encourage other citizens at the same identical situation to not pay it as well. Now, I've also noticed as a certain amount of inconsistency that the city has. For instance, my water bill was red July 1st to August 1st. Due date, the 28th. Next time it was red, August 1st, August 29th. Due date, in 27 days. It's different from the first one. What I'm saying is that your inconsistencies shows me that on some days, the water bill is due in 28 days, some is due in 25 days, in some cases, is due 31 days. So I don't see that as being inconsistent, because I'm concerned. I would also indicate that not only does the water bill seem to be, have some inconsistencies to it, but there are also other issues that involve the water bill. Now, my main reason for indicating to you that I'm not paying that $10 late charge is because no one still has not given me an answer as to what "in-house" means, because that's what I was told. That's how this charge came about, "in-house." I appreciate it very, very much if somebody explained to me what "in-house" means on this particular water bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry Gauthier, 5926 Greenmore Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, staff, city employees. I've spoken on several topics in the past, and I started off with, my Lord and my God tells me and shows me what I need to see and do. Well, we look at Washington Boulevard, traffic jams, people getting off at 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon, and they want to be home by 2:00 p.m. Well, you got a flashing traffic light. If you yield to the right and you look, you'll get through there. It may not be as fast as you want to, but you'll get there. Okay, we talked about Magnolia Street. If you want to make buttermilk, just go down Magnolia. You can start at the 1500 block of Magnolia, heading north, or you can go to the 3100 block of Magnolia, where I almost had a head-on collision. Nobody called me. I called them, said, "Meet with me, and we'll discuss it and see if we can rectify the problem." Nothing was solved. No phone calls, no meetings, trespassing on my property. I've called. I discussed with the police department. They came out, come to find out, the people that was out there didn't even have a permit. City of Beaumont didn't even know what they were doing. That's trespassing. Then dirty electricity. I spoke about dirty electricity, 247 volts on 110-volt line. I talked with the utility company, didn't get the right answer. I spoke about abuse. After it happens more than three times, then it becomes discrimination. As to what is going on with cyanographic testing, Paul driving in the south into Beaumont off of De Villeneuve, Buford and Carroll Street. I, I just need some people to pick up the phone and call me. I've talked with Texas people before. I've given them an issue that took place. I almost had a collision up on 69 where it comes into I-10, right there at that exchange. People, one of the lanes goes away, and you have only one lane that's going to come into the I-10 exchange. The person cut me off. I had to slam on brakes, skid off the road, and could have killed a bunch of people. Nothing done, no return phone calls. I, I'm glad I come to this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Billy, and I think it's Willie, 7710, and I cannot make up the street name, Beaumont, Texas. Mr. Willie? Okay, I have no more, Mayor. That's it.
All right. If there's no other public comments, we will move on. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda with the exceptions of items E, G, and H?
Make a motion.
Pulled for today.
Make a motion we approve?
There is a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda with the exceptions of E, G, and H that have been pulled. Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood.
Can you, somebody scroll up to T? I think I need to have it pulled. I need to recuse myself.
I think Councilmember Sherwood wants to, wanted it to be voted on separately so she can recuse herself from voting on that item.
Okay. So we will, we can certainly do that. So we will, we're also removing T from the consent agenda, and we will discuss that right after this. So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of E, G, H, and T, please signify by saying aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
The motion was to approve with T, so the motion would need to be amended to exclude T as well, and you would also need to
I was checking you, and I thought you were sleeping, so
No, just
So, so
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus T.
It?
No.
Minus E, G, H, and T?
Your motion, it will be to amending your motion to approve the consent agenda, removing items E, G, F, and T.
Okay, I make a motion that we
It's E, G, and H.
E, G, H, and T.
Write it down.
Sir, any other letters in the alphabet?
No, that's it.
Well, I, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda, E, G, except for E, G, H, and T.
Aye, second.
All right, the, so with that, all in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of items E, G, H, and T, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Well, Mayor?
Yes.
We didn't get a chance to, didn't ask if there was any discussion on the consent agenda, and I had my hand up.
Oh. All right. That is
Is it too late?
Well, I mean, we have voted on it. So is it something you feel like you need to say?
Yeah. And no, I just, on, on item L, I just wanted to, someone to explain how people can get into that program and the home repair program for the public so they could see how they can get into that program and, and have access to some of those monies.
That'll be fine. It won't change the vote. I didn't understand there was any problems, so.
Yes, sir. I'd like to invite Jess Prince up. She's our community services manager, and she oversees that program.
Good afternoon. That program is typically open when we receive our CDBG funds. However, we have a waitlist that exceeds two years of projected funding, so we're not taking applications at this time. We encourage people to check back in January. The application is online on our website, beaumonttexas.gov, and you would click on Services and go to Housing.
And that's where the application is?
Yes.
It say check after the first of the year?
Yes.
That's all I want. Thank you.
All right. With that, Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number T?
T?
Yeah, because we're gonna, we're gonna revisit item T.
Okay. Council, consider authorizing acceptance of a sidewalk easement, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
All right. Is there a motion to accept item T?
Some move to approve. Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval. Is there any discussion? You, you want to recuse yourself?
I need to recuse myself.
All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number T, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Council, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Gulf Coast Electric Company Incorporated of Beaumont for electrical control improvements for Mulberry Street, Piney Point Lane, and Wall Street lift stations, rebid project. It comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, there is a motion for item number one. Is there, is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, I had a discussion. It's something that kind of jumped out to me that we sent this to 674 vendors, were notified, and we got one bid received. Is it, is it possible that as a council, we can do a bid workshop? Because a lot of people are asking about understanding the process, and I think this Because a lot of people are asking about understanding the process, and I think this kind of, somewhat alarming to me. I just like a clear understanding of what our process is, how thorough it is, do, how do we get the information out? Because that's a little alarming, 674 on one in return.
Sure, you can do a workshop. Is that for the benefit of vendors, possible bidders?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I can get a second, I appreciate it.
Second.
All right. With that, we're gonna move back to the discussion on item number one. If there's no other...
I have something.
Oh, Councilman Duria.
Oh, item one. Is there a reason why we just got one, that shot, one bid return, and you sent out 674?
This is specifically related to the controls and the switches, electrical improvements inside the lift station. And it's pretty specialized work, and there's not a lot of vendors that will do this scale of work at municipal cost. So we could compete with the industrial, we can't compete with the industrial-scale electricians. And so, and know how to insert, install these controllers, get them programmed the way that they need to be programmed, work with us after the, after the sale. And so that's why you will only typically see for a lot of our bids, we cast a wide net across the state of Texas, and, but we still only get back this one bid, because they're, they're more, I believe, they're more comfortable with working with us. They work with us every day. But at the end of the day, you know, the, we're not attracting the industrial contractors to do work on municipal work.
Okay. Is there anything you can do to change that? Money? That's it. Okay.
All right, is there any other discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Counsel, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Green Spaces, six of Liberty for the Howell Street and Sulein pavement restoration project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Motion, will you approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Counsel, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Partless Industrial Enterprise, Inc. of Houston for the Cattail Marsh Wetland 72-inch outfall pipe coating project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? Councilman Duria?
Just wondering why the lowest bid didn't get it, and they're right here in Beaumont.
So the apparent low bidder, their submission package had deficiencies, including failure to acknowledge all three project addenda, and they had a lack of responsive references. So when y'all ask if we go back and check these bids, we do. And in this case, unfortunately, for the apparent low bidder, there were issues that were missing that precluded us from awarding, recommending award of a contract to that contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Counsel, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Capital Underground Utilities LLC of Houston for the water line replacement for street rehabilitation phase six, Oldham Road, Chemrock Avenue, and Harriet Street, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve. Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to C-Tex Construction Corporation of Beaumont for the Quiet Zone Media and Reconstruction Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five?
I make a motion, will you approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hilliard?
I, I just want to say that, thank you for, for us getting this thing going. It is going to save the lives of a lot of people. It is, it's about time, and also, if we could get the information out, is there a way to do that, Mr. City Manager, that we can get some kind of release, that we cast a wide net and let everyone know that the city is actually working to, to make sure that their lives are better without train horns?
So we do have a dedicated website on the city's webpage for the updates that we're publishing monthly, roughly, about the progress of this project. So I was waiting for today's vote in order to push that update, and then we'll coordinate with our communications department to make sure that that gets pushed out as well.
Yeah, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, everything that we can use. Because this is a really big deal, and I, I can't say enough how much I appreciate the hard work that your departments put in and the long hours to make sure this happens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Duria?
So is this just the first of, and we have more of these to come?
So this will address the West End Quiet Zone deficiencies. So those are the ones that roughly along Keith Road, Todd Street, Woodton, Major Drive, and Langham Road. And that's known as the West End Quiet Zone. So once all of those crossings are completed, then the Quiet Zone with FRA's approval will be reestablished, and they can quit sounding the horns. This does not address any other railroad crossings in the city at this time.
Do we have any that we're going to address at a later date?
We've been developing cost estimates for the other quiet zones, and that will probably be a discussion for when we come to you with the next capital program proposal, because each, depending on the level of complexity, the costs are in the millions of dollars. So it will be a topic for deeper discussion. If you would like for us to, as we get closer to that point, discuss that further with council, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman Duria. Councilman Turner?
Yeah, I, I would support us discussing it to kind of see a strategic plan to kind of get it across the city. I'm happy it has been addressed in the West End. That's been a consistent complaint. I see it on social media, too. Councilman Hilliard, and it's been consistent. But, you know, I also do support Councilman Duria, as well as I do support you, with seeing if we can address, form some form of strategic plan to address it across the community. Of course, we can't do it all at once, but I do want to make sure we decipher the money to make sure we kind of take care of everybody as far as quiet zone, at least have a plan to address it in the future.
Right. And to be clear, this is to make the repairs to the existing quiet zone. The establishment of the new quiet zone is, is going to be an order of magnitude higher in cost.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. I just, I still want to create a plan to get there.
Yes, sir.
And, yes, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I just want to also make a note that there are quiet zones that have been requested in Ward Three as well, particularly on Helbig, just to put that on the record.
Thank you. In case it wasn't said, the projected is allocated 60 calendar days for substantial completion, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of items number six?
Counsel, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order W-3 to the contract with King Solutions Services LLC of Houston for the Grand Avenue and Magnolia Avenue pipe bursting contract, Phase One, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number six. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
This is for staff. Could someone answer, with this being the third change order, is it like a timeline that, how much longer it is? I see it's additional 15 days, but is it, is it 15 days to get the work complete? Or is it 15 days just to address this particular thing?
Those 15 days are just to address the work in proposed change order number three. Don't have a current construction schedule for when we anticipate completion of the project, but I can definitely get that information and share that with council.
Yes, ma'am, I just want it on the record, so I didn't want citizens confused thinking it was over in 15 days.
Judging by the condition out there, no, we're not done yet.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on item number six? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Counsel, to consider amending the ordinance containing the master fee schedule for water sewer and environmental health rates, and it comes with the recommendation of approval, excuse me.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Counsel, to consider amendments to Chapter 22 of the City Code of Ordinances, and it comes with the recommendation of a lot of stuff, with the recommendation. It's, it's, I can read it. The city currently assesses a late fee the day after payment is due, providing customers with about, with about 22, providing custom, customers with about 22 days from the billing date to pay. A review of neighboring cities found that late fees were assessed within one to 10 days after the due date. Based on this comparison and potential impacts on revenue and cash flow, staff recommends implementing a 10-day grace period. I think the request was for 21 days.
So Mayor, before you vote on that, the memo is prepared by me, but the recommendation was a suggestion from the Finance Department. Just wanted to clarify that. The, the request came from Councilman Crenshaw, which was accepted by Councilman Williams, as stated in the memo. And so normally, staff would not have made a recommendation on items that are not proposed by staff. However, the Finance Department did ask that that language be included so that it could be a consideration with the vote.
All right, is there a motion for item number eight?
I move that we go with the recommendation of the Finance Department to extend a 10-day grace period.
All right, as the motion is presented.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for item number eight. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Williams?
Being as we're passing this today, is there any way we could waive late fees that maybe were incurred this month?
So I think late fees are addressed by ordinance. So retroactively doing it, you would have to kind of amend your ordinance. It's a very tricky situation, so the answer is yes and no. You couldn't do that today. If you wanted to do it retroactively, you could go back and amend your ordinance to allow that language to be included to do that.
Just kind of address it in this...
Yeah, so there's some... So, and here's the thing, it's, it's not an issue before council today to kind of waive late fees, but if that's something council wanted to do, you kind of have to do it, because the, the late fees are set by ordinance. And so to adjust that or to do that, we probably need to be by ordinance as well. So it's a, it's a yes and it's a no kind of scenario. Does that make sense?
Are you saying it can be done, but it couldn't be done today?
Yes, because it's not something that's before council as a, as a general item.
I think that's an answer.
Okay, thank you.
And, Councilman Turner?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with what Councilmember Williams said, that we could bring it from staff as a general item and see if we can get that addressed in the future to kind of reflect what we're doing.
So what you could do today, because there's, we're currently in another billing cycle, which means bills are about to go out, right? So you could obviously request that this become effective today, so it wouldn't impact any bills that had already went out. But any billing cycle that is current, that has not become due, would be impacted by this. So even if someone had already received their bill, but their due date had not passed, you could, so say someone's bill is due tomorrow, right? You could say that this would not, this would go into effect and not impact that individual. So for anyone's bill who is, is not currently due, that this be applied to that.
And, but this doesn't do that, like...
The motion that's before you does not. So what this would do, this would go into effect today, and it would actually impact the next billing cycle, unless you changed your, unless the motion was amended to say that you wanted it to be impactful immediately.
Okay.
Which means, which means it would affect anyone whose bill is not currently due.
Okay, I got you.
Councilman Crenshaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several things. Just the, the recommendation here brings up red flags to me. Providing customers with about 22 days from billing date to pay. I do not understand why the city bills with the due date changing every month. I don't understand why we can't bill on 30 days, and that's when your, your bill is due. That way, the due date is consistent. Seems to me by changing everyone's due date every month, it creates confusion and allows for problems with the billing. So I understand that's not an issue for us today, but I really do believe that this, that staff needs to sit down and number one, be sure that our billing complies with state law. Because while we are sitting here today, the city attorney is showing me that one aspect of the Public Utilities Code, I believe that's what she showed me, said that the max late fee is $5 or 10%. I have routinely paid a $10 late fee on a $30 and $40 water bill. So that tells me right there that we may be out of compliance with state law with the $10 fee. I don't know when it went from $5 to $10. To me, it seems like it's probably been within the last three or four years, because it used to always be a $5 late fee. But I just, I think there's a lot of issues here, and I think that we really need some lawyers to sit down with our water utilities, I'm sorry, water customer service, and address these issues, because I think that there's a lot going on here that's incorrect, and we hear it all the time from customers and residents that are frustrated with their water bills. And just by the language that we're using in the memos today, it brings up all kinds of red flags for me. Here's why I originally changed my recommendation from 10 days to 21 days. There was a bill, most recently on our legislature, to change the date to 21 days. It passed the Texas House of Representatives. It failed in the Texas Senate. That tells me that a lot of people in Austin got together, and this thing was able to pass the House, and they made the determination that it was better to have a 21-day grace period instead of a 10-day. So that also tells me there's a very good chance that next legislative session, that that could actually pass, and that that would then put the city of Beaumont's water billing out of code. So that's why I think it's better that we go to 21 days. If all we can do is go to 10 days today, I guess that would be okay. It's better than nothing. But a lot of people tell me that... But a lot of people tell me that are on uh bill pay with their bank, that by the time they get their bill and their bank pays the bill pay automatically every month, they get a late fee because of the change in the due dates and because it's not enough time to get done. So I just don't understand why the city needs to have such confusing water bills. We keep having these problems over and over and over. So I am uh in favor of as much time as we can give our citizens today, so I like the twenty-one days. But I'm not going to vote against this if the ten days is all I can get, but I do want to uh make it noted why I thought that twenty-one days made more sense. Um, uh, and uh lastly, um, I believe that there was an audit done of our water uh customer service. Uh, we have still not seen the, the results of that. Uh, so I'm wondering if maybe it makes sense for us just to have a workshop where we can talk about water billing uh and air out some of these issues and invite the public to come and, and give their input, because it does seem to be uh problems acknowledged from both within the city uh, from our city staff uh as well as obviously all the comments that, that we have made over the last several months since I've been on council, that uh things need to change and things need to uh, to be improved.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sherwood?
Um, originally, when we first got on council, I had an issue where there were um, an elderly couple that their son was paying their bill, but it was a requirement that he had to come and physically pay it if it was um, if it had been turned off or something to this effect. So I'd like to add to uh what Councilman Crenshaw is saying, that basically the process is a little cumbersome, and so inside of that workshop, if we could also look into the way that we pay these bills, because it could get into, okay, now it's late, now there's a late fee, and now someone has to physically come here, that's creating a little bit of a hiccup in the giddyup. So I want to encourage us when we do have this workshop that we in, incorporate the way that we're paying the bill as well, not just the late fees and the ordinance is about the ten days, but also the options of how we pay this, uh, just for the record.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
And just, just lastly, you know, to that water customer service department, I know as a city council, nine times out of ten, if somebody called my phone, they're already upset. So just be mindful of, you know, the role and the job we sign up for, I get it, I understand. I take phone calls sometimes, and I'm in a good mood playing with my kid, and people can, whatever their issue is, they don't care, they let you hear it. So just keep that in mind in this process. I also like to know as a recommendation from the water department, what we are lacking as a council to stop them from being efficient as the request that we're making. You know, I think that's important too, that we kind of can see if it's some things that we are lacking, because I know when it comes to funding, often it's things that are requested, and we cut things in the budget, and we turn around, we want very efficient results. So I, I'm kind of open to kind of getting into it all the way, as Councilman Sherwood and Crenshaw said, to see what are we lacking, but also keep in mind, you know, I get calls about complaints, but I understand, because almost every time my phone rings, someone is upset. So I just want us to keep that in mind as well with customer service.
Yeah, just like, like Counselor, we, we had our first meeting, we heard the findings of the audit study last week. Uh, of course, we haven't been able to follow up on that, city attorney's been out of town ever since, so we haven't been able to follow up on some things there. We're, we're implementing some uh things that we'll be doing, and I thought we had already agreed to come to this council with the report on that finding. I could be incorrect, but I thought that was already determined, we were going to do that, so that will be forthcoming to you. Uh, you, you know, there are issues, but be mindful, we have forty-three thousand water customers. I don't know anybody else anywhere around here that's got forty-three, any kind of customers, forty-three thousand. So you're gonna have some things that happen. That doesn't make what happened correct, but the, but the possibility of things happening is, is greater when you got forty-three thousand customers, but we get about five that shows up at the dice on a regular basis. So that percentage is, is not as bad as it appears. Is it bad? If, if, if it's one, it's too many, okay, it's, it's one, but I just wanted to say that. I want staff to talk about some reasons why it would be a problem to go to twenty-one days uh of billing, some of the things that the city would face, and then I'll say something else. So June, either you or Bridget.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll cover that. Staff did look at some other cities, council member and council members. We uh, we have sister cities that we compare ourselves to. So we reached out to um many of our sister cities to see what their late billing policy is. Uh, five of those cities responded, and I can tell you what those, who those five cities are. City of Bel Air, Pasadena, La Porte, Deer Park, and Port Arthur. Uh, two of those cities have a uh late payment policy, very similar to ours. The next, the next day, uh, they're assessed a late uh, a late fee, just like Beaumont. One city, one city's policy, every month, uh, the bills are due on a Friday, and come that Monday morning, if payment isn't made, uh, even throughout the weekend, they're assessed a uh late, late fee. Uh, so they have the weekend to pay. Another city has a five-day uh grace period, and, and another has a ten-day grace period. So there was no city that had anything greater than, than ten days. So that's why city staff recommended a uh ten-day grace period.
Yeah, talk about billing and the, the issues with billing with a twenty-day period, late period.
Um, what will, with twenty-one days, with the twenty-one-day uh grace period, what will really happen is that uh by the time a late fee is assessed, let's say somebody waits until uh the twentieth day or the twenty-first day, they won't know that they're assessed a late fee until two billing cycles later. So it won't show on the next bill, because that bill will have already gone out. So we, we think that would cause quite a bit of confusion if we went to a twenty-one-day uh, uh billing grace period. Uh, again, that's another reason why we assessed or recommended the ten-day uh late fee grace period. And also during that twenty-one days, uh, you know, people are still receiving water and sewer and garbage service. Uh, uh, and, and, and we additionally think that it, it, it could possibly cause um, um, a cash flow issue. There may be people who, or most citizens may wait until the end of that twenty-one-day cycle, and the revenue that comes to the city to pay for operations may be impacted, we don't know. So those are things that, that we thought of and considered uh before we made the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, in twenty-one days, they will have received another bill that won't reflect that late fee if they're late, and then we'll have compounded the problem by the time they get another bill in the future, and it will create confusion. That's why we're recommending the ten days. It fits with the timeline of billing and, and.
And, and there's two things I want to add, just from my experience, my short time on council, is one is to, for people to understand that a, all the incoming calls are recorded, uh, because we had a uh, we had a drought shortly after I became mayor, and I had a number of people call me and tell me that they were frustrated because water bills went up, and that when they called uh water customer service, you know, they didn't feel like they got the proper treatment. And I asked them, I, you know, if they had made calls from their cell phone, and without exception, every one of them that called me did say that. And I said, well, if you go back to your calls, you can tell us the day and the time that you called, and we will be able to pull that tape, and we can use that as a training, you know, for any employee. And uh, and I never received anybody's response, which I would, I'd have to go back to say for sure, but I'd say it was close to fifteen. And the other thing that I know that we need to address, because we've had conversations about this with some other things, and in this workshop, I think it would be an appropriate time, is a lot of it, or some of these issues are associated with our billing software and our software system, which is pretty antiquated. And I know we've been researching on the cost of upgrading those uh, the software so that we can be more efficient. Uh, but uh, you know, so maybe we can get an update on that as well, so that we can see if any of this could be helped perhaps solved with software updates without it increasing uh delaying efficiencies with the number of employees that we have. But is there any other discussion, Councilman Hillier?
Well, I, I can, I can speak as a business owner, and I'm sure Mike will back me up. You know, we, we sell goods and service, and we allow our customers a thirty-day uh billing cycle. We give them thirty days to pay, and, and, you know, we've never hit any financial hardship. And I have thousands of customers, and I know Mike does too, and so, you know, just to be fair to a lot of our citizens that are living on fixed incomes, I think uh twenty-one days would be a fair assumption for these uh individuals to give them time uh to make these water bill payments. So I, I mean, from a business standpoint, pretty much everybody I know does a thirty-day billing cycle. And so, uh, you know, I don't know why a city would be different. You know, I, I could see us doing thirty days instead of twenty-one.
Well, yes, sir, and I, I, I agree, I would, I would put to Councilman Williams that I, when you buy retail, you pay at the time of it. But, and I know in the mortgage business, which I'm a part of, it's fifteen-day grace period, so it certainly can vary. But again, the only other thing I want to add that we address is oftentimes as a council, we're talking about ways to enhance the customers that may cost the city additional money when we don't, when we constantly struggle with having enough staff and being able to upgrade our software to the degrees and, you know, and cutting budgets. So we also have to be a mi- mindful of, I, I mean, I think all of us ran because we want a better Beaumont, and we certainly want customer service that's good, but we also have to pay for it. And if there is a cost, where is that money going to come out of next, uh, next annual budget? Because, you know, there are things that do cost, and that we do have to account for. I'm not saying we can't, we just want to be mindful of it. So, but we currently have a motion for the uh. Yes.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to commend uh Sheray's department on the audit, they did a thorough job, and, and to be currently upfront, there, they did, there are some findings we need to fix, there's some things that need to be fixed. So I'll be honest with you upfront on that. So when we come to you and have this discussion about the audit, we want to have solutions. We, we want to have some solutions, bringing them to you, some things, recommendations for council other than just putting, dumping it in your lap, so that, that's the plan, is to have that done. Uh, but to be clear now, as they said, you already have twenty days to pay a bill. Then uh twenty to twenty-two as council member. Crenshaw said this can be inconsistent, but then you had, you had in twenty-one days on top of that twenty-two days. So that's where it gets cloudy, when it gets into that next billing period of the twenty-one days, it gets to be a period. Uh, but whatever this council wants to do, we'll make it work, but, but it does create a hardship uh in going to twenty-one days. We're just being honest with you, don't have a personal preference at all, but we just, we don't want to add to the problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman?
I just want to be sure I understood uh what Mr. Ellis said, the city staff is, is telling us as to why they want ten days instead of twenty-one days. Are you justifying not going to twenty-one days because the city would run out of money and not being able to collect that late fee and that eleven-day difference?
No, I'm not justifying that.
What, what was it, then what did you mean when you said that the city would not have the, the resources to do that?
I, I said potentially, it, it could cause a, a cash flow issue, potentially, but, but I didn't say that.
We are gonna do a workshop on this, and we, and we can address those.
That, that's just remarkable to me. We, I, I, don't we have forty million dollars in the bank? I mean, how much are we generating on late fees a month? Maybe a, a hundred thousand? How, how could that possibly impact the city's cash flow?
All right, Councilman Crenshaw, thank you.
I, I just, I don't know, that, that, that's just, and now it's raining.
All right, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I, I, I get that the issue is extending the time. I think what we want to do is land on something reasonable, and if twenty-one days on top of twenty-two days puts you into the middle of another billing cycle, what we're, I think what they're suggesting is that ten days basically brings you to a full thirty days, or thirty-one days, thirty-two days, I guess if you start with twenty-two, without putting you into the next billing cycle that can create some contention for people that may create some more contention. In, in other words, the ten-day is a happy medium in between us going all the way for twenty-one days, not as few as a week, and so ten days is in the middle somewhere. I'm not opposed to twenty-one days, but I get that that may create some more contention and controversy. I'm not really in the mind frame that it's gonna cost the city money, or we're gonna lose any money or anything of that. But I do work in insurance, and I do work in medical transportation, and I know what a thirty-day billing cycle looks like. If you start extending that to forty and fifty days, then you've got some problems that could, you could incur. Not that I'm gonna run out of money, but I think that ten days is a happy place to make a medium for the staffers and give some grace. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Just one more point of clarification, uh, Councilmember Crenshaw, fund balances for water is larger than they've ever been. So the city's not having a distress with dollars and, and water fund.
Okay, yeah, our bond rating has improved because of the increase of the fund balance, which is maybe to your credit. But again, I, I just, I'm lost over the argument that, you, you know, the city's gonna be cash strapped, because we gave a, a, a longer, an eleven-day grace period uh extension. I, I, I just, it, to me, it seems uh nonsensical, but you know.
And I was not speaking for Mr. Ellis, but, you know, a lot of those dollars are invested in different instruments, et cetera, all the time, you know? It depends on what those dollars are, so maybe that can influence cash flow sometimes, but I'm not saying that's the case, but I'm just saying.
Right.
I, I just want to make clarity, clarity this month, plenty of money.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that either, uh, you know, Mr. Williams, I, I guess, just like today, there's a lot of water and sewer-related equipment, big dollar amounts that y'all just approved. So that's gonna, that's gonna encumber a lot of cash uh for a lot of these major pieces of equipment uh upfront. So a, a, again, I'm, you know, these are just things that, that we thought of as we were um, you know, coming up with a recommendation that we thought would be most beneficial to the city of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
And lastly, just for the workshop clarification, I understand if we're gonna do it today, there's nothing wrong when the workshop comes back. If you guys do research and see it's feasible to hit the longer mark, but my second question is within the workshop, let's just say, I know we asked why bills can't be between the first and the fifth, or or what, what do we do when a customer turns on their water on the tenth of the month, or turns on the money on the tw- on the water on the twentieth of the month? Because it's no guarantee when you turn your water on, so how does that work if we were looking to make it a particular time? Is that something staff can bring back this to those options? Because I think it's important that we can't really control when people turn their waters on, water on, and how do we deal with the billing? If it doesn't happen between the first and the fifth, if we did want to kind of make it a standard date, so it could kind of be uniformal?
That's something we'll have to bring back, um, un- unless you have a response to that, Ms. Eby.
Um, I think that's probably something that we're gonna have to look at.
Yeah.
As a whole, with, with the audit findings and everything. But I did just, just want to throw one more thing out there, thank you, June, for that. But um, I did also want to say that we do typically waive fees at least, you know, once every year on a twelve-month rolling basis, if it's requested by the citizen. So we are already, we are doing that concession.
I just want to make sure we're kind of clear on what we want to do with the workshop. That's why I said that's something I would like to see within that workshop, so we know the options and what we're dealing with. I just wanted to make sure what we're asking for is feasible, because I'm open to anything. I just wanted to make sure what we're asking for is feasible because I'm open to anything that makes sense.
So Mayor, if I may, um, because the audit that my office conducted specifically looked at the issues that were requested at the time by Council, um, Councilman, uh, Grinchall and Councilman Turner when, uh, that dealt with the individual having, um, a disconnection improperly. And so what we did is we reviewed the entire process, um, from start to finish and we made recommendations on, um, the efficiency of the, the office, some, uh, what we noticed as gaps in the process and the procedure. Um, we also like interviewed department directors that oversee that department, um, as well as some, some of the departments to see like what, what they were seeing in terms of what they consider, um, that happened. So a lot of what, what's being requested now in terms of when a workshop could be presented may push that deadline back if you needed, um, staff to do additional research on a finding out if there's a different, different software, which is something that we did recommend, but that's an ongoing process to see what would work with the city. If we're also requesting, um, some additional, um, information as it relates to effectiveness and procedures that would change. Because what we did was audit our current practices and make recommendations on what we currently do. And so the recommendations that were presented in the city manager, I believe that was last, last week. Um, so we completed the audit on, uh, September 30th, um, and, uh, cleaned it out. Um, and I reviewed it with my staff internally, presented it to, um, to other members of, of executive office for review. And then we met internally, um, last week to discuss, discuss those findings. If, if council wants something different at that workshop, it may take a while. Like I said, the audit itself took over, over 30 days to complete. And there was the reason for that, that gap in between, um, when it was discussed internally with executive staff was to give them a chance for feedback and for follow-up. Um, there were some questions that came out of the audit that required, that they wanted to have follow-up questions on. So we used that additional time prior to our meeting of last week to, to answer those questions, uh, specifically, um, wait times. What was the average wait time for a citizen that wasn't included in the average, um, the original audit? Because that wasn't an initial concern. Um, but we did go back and, and look at that. We also compared that to long-term. Was the current wait time now, was the current wait time when it's peak time, the drought? Um, what's overall, like, you know? So if there's something different, I'm just telling you that it does, and it will require additional time. If council said, hey, we wanted it at the next meeting, that might not be feasible if we're requiring something different that was already discussed internally.
Well, just me as an individual, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't want it to come to us as a workshop if it's not as efficient as it actually be. So I can only speak for myself, but my thing is, how can we actually make it better and efficient? Because what's happening is people are consistently coming with issues about the billing and I don't want to just kind of talk about within, how can we really make it efficient and better?
So that's, the audit did focus on improving the overall operational efficiency of the office. Um, and I think that that, that could be addressed if, if council said we, we would like it at the next workshop. I think that that could be addressed at the next workshop. Um, but like I said, Councilman Sherwood, uh, Councilwoman Sherwood, yeah, was more in, in line with like software and software equipment, even though that's one of the recommendations, um, that we brought out in the audit. It's not something that we're prepared to say, this will work for the city. It's something that obviously we have to get with our IT department, which again, we haven't even, that meeting only contained, um, high-level staff, um, myself, the city manager, the department directors that oversee it, and the ACM. So it did not include, um, our IT director, who would be the one who would need to do that search, right? So we haven't expended out with any other thing that we do when we roll it out. It does, it's a multifaceted project. So there is some other things that need to do. Um, there's also some operating procedures that we discussed that we, we would need to kind of like operate and adjust for that department. That's gonna involve some cooperation with some other departments. So even though we're at the recommendation stage, and again, we can present that to council, we have yet to start implementing those things, um, to do that. Um, we did assess in that meeting, um, myself internally, we did look at what the timeline for some of those projects would be, um, with anything when it comes for improvement. Improvement is not something that you just fix overnight. It's gonna be a continual thing. So obviously, once we start implementing projects, once we see how it goes, there might be some tweaking of that, that process as well. Um, it, this might work and we might need to torque it a little bit. We might have thought this was a good thing and we need to change it. So, uh, like I said, we can present the findings of the audit as we present to executive staff. But if there's some, an additional in terms of like what software we're proposing, what are some other things and what are the costs for those things? We just don't have that yet.
All right, well, I'm okay with the, the findings, with the expectations that we're looking for more after that. I guess, I mean, but I'm just one of seven, so I guess I gotta see how other people feel. But I, I definitely want to see some true results, not just the report. That's what I'm looking for.
We might, Councilman.
We might could get on, on the November 18th meeting, uh, with council. If you have some other issues that you specifically want to hear about, address, if you would send those to me, we can get that information together for you and include it in that workshop.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City.
Just a point of clarification. I believe the city attorney covered this earlier, but my water bill is due today, uh, the 21st. I plan to go pay it today by 5 o'clock. If we pass this 10 days, I have 10 days on this billing cycle to pay it because you said this would go into effect today.
So resolutions go in, go into effect when the mayor signs it? When we have to adjust, um, like ordinance languages or, or things like that or other things? It could be longer, but if it was made to say that he, on effective signing, which is most of our things do go in effect when, once the mayor signs, um, provided that the mayor signed it before 5 o'clock?
Well, I, I'm just, I, I, I'm wondering, and I could care less about my personal situation, but I'm wondering how I communicate this to people because questions are immediately gonna be asked when we leave here. And when they say, so if my water bill is due this month, is this going to apply this month? Or is this going to apply on the next billing cycle? Because earlier, when you talked about it, it made it seem like what we would do today is effective today, but it would not be applied until the next billing cycle.
So Councilman, uh, Williams had specifically asked, like, how would this impact someone whose water bill was due today? So when a water, when a mayor signs that ordinance or resolution, it goes into effect that day. So if the mayor signed it after 5, which is when somebody's water bill would be due, it obviously wouldn't apply because it's not signed until after 5. So now we're getting to semantics and stuff. So it's due, the, it can be effective upon signing, but it determines, it's 3:47 right now. So if the mayor usually signs them post-meeting. So if the mayor signs it post-meeting before 5 o'clock, obviously we, we need to adjust that. But there's some individuals who've already paid their water bill, paying their water bill, paying it online. Um, Councilman Williams, I told him he can make the, the motion that no one be assessed a, a late fee today, uh, with the passage of the bill, if that was the motion that's on the floor. But the motion is on the floor, it only consists with the, the bill going into effect today. So this would only impact someone whose bill was due on the 23rd, on the 22nd, because the mayor would have signed it and that would have been in effect today. So it wouldn't necessarily affect somebody whose water bill is due today because he could sign it after 5, technically.
We already, any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed with the motion that we have for 10 days and we will have a workshop. So, uh,
Do I need to amend it to make it effective immediately?
Your mo- your motion would need to say that you would like this, that you would like to approve it with a 10-day grace period and you'd have to add the caveat that no one be assessed a late fee today and moving forward.
So I move that we go with the recommendation of the 10-day grace period with a caveat that no one be assessed a late fee as of today, effective immediately.
Say again.
It was, it was an amendment to our motion so that, so that this, this.
Why did, why did they?
Everybody.
You said make it, you said it don't be assessed a late fee, uh, as of today? What if they go past the 10 days?
So I, I believe the content of the motion is that they not be assessed a late fee if their bill is due today before they pass it, before the signing of the bill. So that they, it would basically pause any late fee that was due today. Correct?
Correct.
So it would not erase late fees in the entirety, but only pause a late fee that was possibly due today.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all those in, uh, favor approving item number eight as presented with the, uh, adjustments as read into the record, uh, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel to conduct the public hearing to declare the following 50 structures to be unsafe and order the owners to, to raise the set structures within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting city council, council authorization to demolish these structures without further, further notification to the property owner or city council action. Additionally, if the property owner of a structure requested is authorized by city council to enroll in a work program, all the liquid taxes shall be paid in full or payment plan shall be established prior to the enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within 10 days after the effective date of the ordinance.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody that has signed up to speak?
We do. I have Travis and Jan McCall, 12398 McCall Road, Hampshire, Texas. Item number 10, 6085 Concord.
First of all, thank you all for your, your service to the city, all the issues y'all, y'all grapple with. I'm just glad I have my own water well. I'm here, I'm here, here today to talk to y'all about, uh, this Primitive Baptist Church. It's a new hope Primitive Baptist Church on 6085 Concord. It's a small family church. It's been there for 75 years. Uh, over the years, the membership has dwindled down. We haven't had a preacher in several years and the homeless people in the area to, uh, broken into the building to get out of the cold. And, uh, we're in the process of trying to either get the building renovated, have it moved, and la- as a last resort, have it demolished if we have to. But, uh, I won't take any more of y'all's time, but, uh, long story short, we just need some more time. Uh, and that's all we're asking is a little more time to try to, uh, do something with the building before the city demolishes it. And we're in the process of, of, uh, looking at all our different, uh, options. Economically is the only thing that, that, it's always the money. But, uh, we just appreciate you, your, uh, your consideration and, uh, we just need more time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Bowns, 4365 El Paso, Beaumont, Texas, number 12.
Hello, Mayor, Council, staff. I have a property at 4365 El Paso that I've been working on for a while. And, excuse me, can I get some water? No, I'm just kidding. I have, uh, thought I was in a work program, I believe I was, but some time passed and we have gotten the structure up to code except for one item, HVAC, vena hood. We've passed our structural roofing. It, what, what had happened, we had a, a small fire in the front, 10 feet of the, of the front room. And we got that all taken care of. It's got, uh, past electrical, past, uh, structural. We had a building, I mean, a plumbing inspection today, I believe. I don't know. All we had to do was put something on the outside of the hose. The whole structure wasn't damaged, but once a little bit is damaged, you gotta bring everything up to code and, uh, that's not it. Well, that was it way back, but that's not what it looks like now. Y'all have current? I have a current picture if y'all want to see it. But anyway, all that's been done, painted, new roof, uh, and past inspections. So, uh, maybe, I think I was gonna ask Silas some more time on the, uh, how much time. We're, we're close to being finished with everything as far as bringing everything up to code. All the, um, electrical HVAC, I'm still holding up on HVAC because it's never had a vena hood, but we're getting that done. So the water is on, uh, the electrical drop is connected, but it's, the electricity's not on until the final, final. So we've gotten it, um, almost all the way finished. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Edmund Richards, 2020 Bun Street, Beaumont, Texas, um, 1165 Goliad, item number 17.
Good evening, City Council. I'm just, my name is Edmund Richards, and you said 2020 Bun. Have a house at 1165 Goliad and I'm just simply here to ask for more time to finish the property up. I understand this is the last end of the road, so, but I will get it done if you all allow me to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Wilma Spikes, 1605 Victoria, but, excuse me, Beaumont, Texas, item number 27, 1950 Chachima. I don't know, Beaumont.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Everyone, good afternoon. Um, I'm Wilma Spikes. I'm here to ask, uh, about the property at 1950 Jalkamy, Jalkamy. Uh, I would like to enter into a work program to pull this property back up to standards, uh, to meet city code. When it, previously, when the property did get red tag, it was a little confusion and I think they had other department heads. But, um, back here once again, the property is red-tagged and I would like to enter into a work program, if it's okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Christie Del Oserta, 4590 Kenneth Avenue, um, Beaumont, Texas, item number 29.
Good afternoon. Yeah, my kids just called me about this, um, letter this morning, so I was completely unprepared. I'm just asking for a little bit more time. The homeowner is currently not available for another week and his son is in Houston, so he's having to come down every weekend and work on it. And we're just gonna need a little more time to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
JT Hayes, P O Box 963, Beaumont, Texas, item number 31, 920 Lockwood.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm a local lawyer here in town. My client here, Mr. Dias, has inherited this property at 920 Lockwood. The biggest problem we have with the property is it does have some problems that needs to be addressed, but it still has his parents' furniture and things in there, a lot of antiques. Uh, we're asking for a work program on the property. I've handled a handful of these cases before and I'm happy to say that every case I've handled has ended up in a successful rehabilitation of the property. So we'd ask you to give us that time. Thank you.
I just want you to know that, uh,
If you get to the mic, please, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Robert Dias. How are y'all? Some of you might know me, some aren't, not. I've been, um, own a business here in Beaumont for over 40 years. Get a lot of work with scouts and, and our church roof program. The, the house is, I have the HVAC system already in my storage. Most of the materials and everything to do the repairs are already have in my shop. What happened was when I originally signed a work deal, I found out my kidneys were failing. And so I had to address that issue. And now that things are back on track, I'd like an opportunity to be able to, um, do the structure, if that be possible.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mark Frazier, 801 Laurel, Beaumont, Texas, um, item number 47, 1056 Vermont.
Uh, Council, uh, Mayor, I'm, I'm here, uh, appearing on behalf of the owner for this particular property. And I'm pleased to, that was, first of all, the, the property situated, uh, it fronts Vermont and on the backside is, uh, Jim Gilligan. And so it's in the middle of Lamar and I'm happy to announce that Lamar has agreed to purchase the property. The effect of that is we're gonna need some more time. Property hadn't been in a work program, so. The property hadn't been in a work program, so the point, or the basis would be to allow for this, for this sale to go forward in Lamar, and we'll have to, as a state agency, we'll have to go through some certain procedures, but we would request that extra time for that to happen.
Thank you, sir.
That's all that I have, Mayor.
All right, with that, if there's no one else to speak, yes, sir? You can come forward and just share your name and address, if you would, Mr. Law.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I had 24920 Lockwood. I thought y'all were together. I apologize, I thought you were with him.
No, that's no problem at all.
Steve Lyle, 975 Lockwood, Belmont, Texas, item number 31.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and the Counsel, and the demolition department, which has kind of guided me through this process. You know, I wasn't aware of Mr., so Mr. Diaz's parlor, but I've lived at this location, my house, for 25 years, and this house has been abandoned for 25 years. I didn't know he had furniture in the house, knew he had inherited it, but we've had, we've turned in things to the city before about animals going in the house through the garage door. It's falling apart. They addressed it by putting some plywood up against the door. And I'm not here to try to take somebody's home or house, but, you know, my neighbors have entrusted me to work on this program, and nothing has been done, except for, you know, when the demolition department went out there and put some signs on it, puts the red tags on it, well, the next week, the red tags were taken off, and there was posted signs put on it. So just, our neighborhood would like the city to do something about it. If Mr. Diaz can get in a program and possibly get it done, like I said, I'm not looking to try to take the man's property, but I do know that if it doesn't get taken, and nothing gets done, I'll be back here to do this again. And just, my neighbors would like to see something done, so I appreciate what y'all are doing. I wish they had the pictures, because it looks pretty bad, but thank y'all for what y'all are doing, and that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's all this time, Mayor. Sorry.
All right. No other hands?
Real quick, Mayor West, if I could have Silas Clutter, our demolition coordinator, come up and speak on the items that came up, and I can tell you which numbers they are to kind of guide you.
Sure.
And do you have the pictures available?
We can.
We're trying to make them.
They are also in your guys' packet that's in front of you as well. We listed them with one, you know, 1, 2, 3, and so on, but we can try to pull it up.
Yeah. We don't have those pictures.
There's no packet.
It's just electronic.
Yeah, so it's, I'm just saying, it's electronic, so there's no, like, hard copy packet like normal.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then we can try to pull that up.
Just as some general info for the councilors who haven't been through one of these red tags hearings before, when it comes to residential structures that the city raises, we do not charge the homeowners for that process, and we do not take the property itself. All we do is demolish the structures that have been tagged. The property will stay in their ownership. Do you have any questions so far as to the structures that came up?
I believe we have seven structures, Councilman Turner.
Just for people watching from staff, normally if the structure is torn down and taxes are owed, like, how does that normally work? Like, what's the process?
So we don't generally get involved in the tax aspect, that's more of a county issue. The one exception is that in order to qualify for this work program post-council, they will have to be caught up on their taxes.
Okay, yeah, I just, I wanted, I knew that, I just thought it was important that that's said on the record, so people know upfront, this is one of the requirements to even enter the program.
Yep, they have to either pay it up in full or prove that they are on a payment plan.
So for this first property, 6085 Concord, the owner, as he said, he did get in contact with me after he got his letter telling him about this meeting. He is interested in selling the property. I do not have a problem with y'all approving a post-council work program, if you want to give him more time.
That's item 10.
4365 El Paso, item 12, from Mark Bowns. He has made some wonderful progress since he got his letter about this council. The pictures for El Paso were taken back in August. He has since renewed his permits. He has passed a plumbing final and an electrical final. If y'all approve a post-council work program, I'm optimistic that he could complete his project.
It's 12.
Item 17.
Sorry, so we discussed 10 and 12, Councilman Sherwood, and he was favorable for both of those.
Item number 17, 1165 Goliad. This property has struggled over the years, but if he wants to get on a post-council work program to complete, I do not object.
I can't keep up with the scroll.
Oh, she's trying to get to it.
We can hold tight till she get to it, I agree.
Sorry, I'm talking faster than her scroll.
Are there taxes owed?
There are not taxes owed on that property.
So on 10, 12, and 17, no taxes are owed?
Correct. The next structure is number 27.
Bless you.
This is item number 27, 1915 Jacome. The owner has boarded and secured the doors and windows fairly recently, which I am happy about. There has not been any other progress. If you want to approve a post-council work program, I do not object, but the owner should be aware that there is pretty hefty taxes owed, and they will not qualify for that work program until that is resolved.
What is that amount?
She owes over $30,000 in property taxes.
And that's 27?
So the rule is, they have to either pay the taxes in full or in a, in a payment plan before that time and be active.
Next property is number 29. This is 4590 Kenneth. There are also over $10,000 in property taxes due at this property. The individual who got in contact this morning is the first time I have ever had any contact. We did send out letters quite some time ago, but they apparently discovered them today. I do not object to a work program if they wish to try to fix this property up, but the same issue with taxes would need to be resolved.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Durio.
Ms. Dela Serta, that came up and spoke, is she the owner of the property?
No, she is.
Okay, do you have to, can someone come up and ask for time if they're not the owner?
You have to be an owner, that's the city's policy, or a, or listed, so like, if it was left to them, like, in co-ownership, like, in heirship, so if the person had died, and they were the children or the heirs of the property, that would work, because the property hadn't been through probate, but counsel typically only extends that to a spouse.
So, Councilman Hillier.
Does this property have electricity?
No, this property has no utilities.
I guess, never mind.
Ms. Dela Serta was trying to speak just now. Can she come back up to the mic and say what she had to say?
Technically, yes, because it's in the public hearing, and council had questions. Typically, we would have went through all, all the properties, but in the past, it's 50, so we, staff opted to only present to council the ones that showed up to speak on the property. So during public hearing is the only time council can have open dialogue with property owners, so if council has questions post the presentation, you can call her back up to answer any questions.
So we will let her come back up.
Or if the mayor, is it the discretion of the mayor?
Let's let him finish, and then she can come back up.
The next property is 920 Lockwood, which is number 31. The owner has been in contact with me several times. I am not opposed to a post-council work program, but the same tax issue is present at this property. I checked this morning, and that has risen to $40,000.
Can you repeat that number real quick, because I wanted to make sure I heard it, because I'm documenting everything?
I checked this morning on the owed taxes, and it has risen to $40,000.
So this, this is the house that one of the neighbors came up and spoke on?
Yes, sir. The last property is number 47, which is a commercial property, which means that there would be a charge for the demolition.
Next time, we'll do a PowerPoint slide. It's tough to predict who's going to come up and speak when the packets are due, but next time, we'll put all of them on a PowerPoint.
Thank you.
This is 1056 Vermont. We have had contact with the owner for some time. If they would like to get on a post-council work program, I do not object. They are up to date on their taxes, and they are seeking to sell the property to a new owner who also plans to demolish the structure.
Yes, Councilman Turner.
So this is actually the building behind the business center at Lamar University?
I believe so, yes, right at the entrance.
Okay.
Depending on which way you're coming from.
So this is the property that he said Lamar was planning to buy?
Yes.
Is that this property here?
Correct.
And just so I'm clear, so of the seven properties that someone came here to speak on today, four do not owe taxes and three do owe taxes.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. You can call her back up if she wants. You're welcome to come back up.
So it's a family property, and his son is actually in Houston, and he's currently in Jefferson County Corrections, and he gets out in a week. He got picked up not long after the inspection was done, so he didn't get there to fill up the paperwork he needed to fill out. Since the inspection, his son kind of got pushed out to Houston, so he hasn't really been able to get in town with his work out there. It's a family property, they've been in their family for generations, and his wife just died just three, four years ago, and so he went through a lot of hardship, and so the kids are really trying to pick it back up now. They just became of age, and they're just now getting on their feet, so they asked me to come be here today because they couldn't.
Thank you, ma'am. There's no one else to speak? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, though. And then, Mr. City Manager, if you could read item number nine?
Okay. Counsel to consider an ordinance to declare the following 50 structures to be unsafe structures and order the owners to raise the said structures within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting City Council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or City Council action. Additionally, if the property owner of the structure requesting is authorized by City Council to enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full or payment plan shall be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within 10 days after the effective date of this ordinance.
All right, is there a motion for item number nine? Yes, Councilman Turner.
Just want to make sure to the three that did owe the taxes, I just want to make sure it's clear that the work program, we couldn't get into it if our payment plan wasn't arranged or if it was paid. I just want to make sure it's clear, so everyone in here understands.
Thank you, Councilman Turner, Councilman Durio.
On, on the three that owe the back taxes, can we, because of reading this, it says, well, what he just, what the manager just read, that they had to sign up for the, for the work program within 10 days of today, and that the taxes had to be paid before they sign up for the work program? Can we agree to give them an extension today? And, and when, and when they, if they meet the requirements, then they're in it, or do they have to wait until after they meet those requirements to be able to go into it?
So the rules are, you have to either pay in full or be on a payment plan, so they can establish a payment plan today and enroll in the work program tomorrow.
Okay. So we, we don't put them in the work program today? They can't get in it today, so we can't?
No, so.
Can we give them an extension?
Why do you need to do that? But you could. There's.
Councilman Turner.
The, the, I, I, I understand what you're saying. The three that are behind, can we explain to them how the work program, and what they go to get into the work program if we decide to move forward with that?
So they just go upstairs to do the work program.
Second floor, left counter, community development. They, we'll have the work program prepared, and then the owner would come up and prove that they are the owner, prove that they've paid any taxes, if they owe any taxes, and then we'll be able to sign the work program. And from there, they have 90 days to dry in the structure, and then 150 days to finish all repairs.
And direct to Ingraham, it has to be the owner of the property, correct, not a representative?
Yes, owner of the property.
Okay.
Or their heirship, if that's, if, as long as it's, you know.
So, I think it needs to be clear, so like, it's heirship, but also there was an attorney here who was representing the property, so that he's a legal representative, he's acting on behalf of his, his client, that's appropriate. The reason we require that the owner or a legal representative be there is because you really can't compel someone to do this. Obviously, council can allow for an individual to be in the work program, and if they don't, within the timeframe, it doesn't, it doesn't count against the property. We just add it back into the property because they failed to comply with the ordinance, so that's at the discretion of council as well. But the reason why we do that is so that, for the reasons we're discussing right now, if you wanted to allow them extra time or give special instructions, they're here to receive that information.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sherwood?
I think one thing that we probably need to get some extra clarity on for those that owe those taxes, they must go to the tax office to enter into, or call, contact the tax office in order to be entered into a payment plan or in order to pay those taxes before you go to the second floor. You can't do that today if you haven't contacted the tax office.
Right. And I'm sure those individuals know that, the people who own the property, because they call.
Allow them to enter into the post-council work program, and we move forward with, allow them to enter into the post-council work program, and we move forward with the remainder of properties.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to exclude number 10, 12, 17, and 47, correct? And, all right, and there is a second on that? Is there any other discussion regarding that? Yes, Councilman Williams?
So can, any of the other people that spoke today, can they still go enter into the work program, or no?
Could not.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
So you just, just clarification, typically, what we do is, is, there's a motion to, as the city attorney pointed out, that there's a motion to approve the recommended ordinance with the exception of, and the list of the numbers, if council so chooses, and that specify that they're able to enter into a work program.
Know what I did?
Kind of.
There were a few that were left out. So I had 10, 12, 17, 27, 29, 31, and 47.
He's not including those. So the motion, the motion was to, for 10, 12, the motion was to approve the ordinance as written, with the exception that 10, 12, 17, and 47 be allowed to enter into a work program.
Okay, so the other three?
And that motion was second, and those other three were not included. So they wouldn't be included with this motion.
Because of the delinquent taxes.
Just because you didn't include them. Because you could, technically, you can approve them and allow them to enter into, give them a chance to enter into a payment plan or work program. And just so council's clear, even though you voted to allow these individuals a chance to enter into a work program, if they fail to do so by the 10 days, then it, it just goes into the raised property.
We won't have to take any more action.
Correct.
Okay. So does that change anything for you, Councilman?
We're in discussion, right?
Yeah, we hadn't gotten out of discussion. Go ahead. No, we're still in discussion.
I'd like to amend the motion to include twenty seven, twenty nine, and thirty one. If they comply, fine. If not, still fine.
We, do we need to accept the amendment or just, we vote on the amendment first?
So she's asking to amend. If she made a second motion, you would have to vote on the second motion. But if she's asking to amend, Councilman Crenshaw would have to accept her amendment. And then I believe Councilman Hillier seconded it. He would have to agree as well.
For the sake of getting out of here, the next five hours, I will accept the amendment, even though I see zero realistic chance that someone that owes forty thousand dollars is going to show up with the money.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hillier?
And I will second.
All right, so now we have all seven properties, ten, twelve, seventeen, twenty seven, twenty nine, thirty one, and forty seven included. With the, they have ten days to enter a work program. And with the ones that three owe taxes, they would have to either enter into a tax payment plan or pay them off. So with that, unless there's any other discussion, all those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the next public hearing?
Counsel to conduct the public hearing, finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property owned by Gwendolyn Walden at seventeen ninety-two Broadway Street with the legal description of McFadden L. four through six, W. four feet of three B eleven, and order the owner to abate public health nuisances within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff is requesting city council authorization to abate said property without further notification to the property owner of city council action.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Promise not to keep you any longer and you have to stay here. You can go to the next slide, Tina. Ms. Bruce Art, I'm sorry. Just to give you some background on this particular property, that second bullet is, the property has been red tagged and declared structurally unsafe, unfit for human occupancy and in a state of deterioration, likely to endanger the health, safety, or the general welfare of city citizens on June twenty seventh. So in September twenty five, it was referred to the Public Health Department. Additionally, the property owner has failed to enclose the pool on the premises properly. A reinspection was done on October the sixth. Next slide. And here's just some pictures. As you can see, the pool is green. And so, and you can see that water hose. Now, we, at the time, pictures were taken. We haven't observed the owner draining the pool, but it just implies that the owner's been draining the pool from that water hose onto the street. Next slide. And there's just some pictures of the particular property. And with that standing water like that, that's just a breeding ground for mosquitoes. And so which poses a health hazard to the community. Questions?
Excellent presentation, is there?
Is that it? It's just the pool with water is the problem?
Well, and it has other litter on the property as well.
But the property is red tagged as well?
It's red tagged. But with that standing water, which becomes a breeding ground for mosquitoes, which carries the West Nile virus. And so you're not allowed to have standing water on any property, even if it was just in buckets. And the pool is not being kept on maintenance, or maintained.
Okay. And has she taken any steps to remedy the issue?
No, sir.
Have we had any contact with her?
We, yeah, we've had contact with her.
Does she live there?
She says she doesn't. But as the staff has gone out between public health and code enforcement, they've noticed a dog on the inside of the property. But as far as we're told, she doesn't live there. But we've made contact with her about cleaning, at least getting the pool maintained.
Okay. And what's the status of the red tag?
Because the structure is, has been declared uninhabitable.
It would have to go to the Historic Landmark Commission first because it is in Old Town. So there's, that's not gone to them first. It's just been tagged for unsafe, it's tagged for unsafe structures. Sorry, I'm tripping over my words.
Do we have a picture of the exterior of the home, other than the pool?
I can pull one up. I'm sure it's in the case. One moment.
Councilman Turner?
So Mayor, while she pulls that up, this is one of those properties I think is a combination between the health department as well as building codes, correct?
Well, code enforcement does an issue, inspection. But it brings it to us when it's, I want it to be declared as a public health nuisance.
Okay.
We have to give it that teeth.
So this is one at this time, it's a competing interest. So the property is red tagged, so that remains in code enforcement. Because differently from when, if it was like a ton of litter on the property, we would have, and no other issues, they would have transferred that to health. But the property is red tagged as an uninhabitable structure. And as Director Inghman said, it does have to go through the Historic Landmark Commission first before it could be completely brought before counsel for consideration for, to be demolished. Code enforcement, whenever they are having problems with properties that present a public health issue, will transfer those properties to public health because that's the only way you can get civil relief. So similar in some other cases where we would be asking the court, if it got to that point, will we be asking the court to allow us to enter the property to clean it? In this regard, we'll be asking to enter the property to essentially drain the pool.
Right.
And just for perspective about, how long have we been dealing with this particular property?
It came to public health in September. I think on those previous, if you go back to that second slide, since June. Since June of twenty five.
Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood?
So there's a, I imagine a proper way to drain this pool, which is not putting the water on the street, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess can anybody speak to what is the right way to drain the pool?
It's to have a plum drain.
Okay, okay.
To the sewer system, yes.
So it's a pool company would come in?
Somebody would come and drain it. Apparently, they don't, the house is red tagged, they don't have the money to drain the pool. And right now, they're just draining it onto the street, which is creating more something or other. So will we, so I guess my question is, the next step is for us to intervene into this?
So the next step would be, obviously, if counsel determined that this was a public health nuisance, the health department would send out a notice saying that the counsel has declared this is a public health nuisance, giving them ten days to rectify the situation. So in all honesty, the average cost to drain a pool with nothing else if you call a regular pool company could be anywhere from a hundred to two hundred dollars. They would charge you by the hour. So I don't know how big that pool is, but it could be a nominal fee. If we, if that didn't happen, obviously, we would file charges. This ordinance also allows for the city attorney to file a chart, a case in civil court, which we would be asking the court to go in and allow us to drain the pool.
Months down the line or whatever, because now we got to give them some time and then we got to.
Nope. So the timeline for this, obviously, if we did ten days and if she said, you know, I contacted the pool company, be at the discretion of the health director to allow her additional time, depending on how quickly she was moving. If she, if it was determined that she was non-responsive, non-cooperative. Obviously, it would.
Be drained and then it will go to court and you will pay a fine or fee or whatever the case.
Well, in civil court, there's no fine. We just ask for our costs back.
Okay, okay.
Well, Councilman Hillier, then Councilman Durio?
So we're going to drain the pool and then it's going to rain and the pool's going to fill back up and then we're back to square one. So what kind of, what are we going to do to make sure the pool doesn't fill back up with water and you're not here again?
So the only relief we can ask for the court would be to drain the pool and fill it in. But that would be up to the court to assess whether or not we could do that. So again, if it got to that point, only thing we can ask is that the pool be drained and maintained and for her to rectify the situation by draining and maintaining the pool that way. It would have to rain significantly hard and a lot for that pool to fill back up. So we'd have to have some Harvey torrent rains to happen. Because just because it would naturally evaporate if the pump isn't running. But if we had to file a civil case, one of the remedies we could request is that we be allowed to drain it and fill it in.
Well, I understand that, you know, hopefully you don't have any biblical proportion rains. But anybody that lives in southeast Texas, you could have just a small thimble full of water and it could have millions of mosquito in it. So the pool will hold water. It will not evaporate, especially if we get one or two inches of rain. And so we're going to continue to mitigate this problem over and over and over and over again.
What the goal is, is to, you know, we can get with her to be cooperative and to maintain the pool, to drain it and she can cover it. And that will prevent it from filling up again.
And she's been very cooperative up until now?
No, sir.
Okay. So is this?
So it's a possibility we could be back before you, if that's what you're asking.
Is the, is the pool enclosed by a fence?
It is not.
No.
See, but that way, I mean, with that thing full of water, a kid could go back there and drown. This is like something I think needs to be done right now. Because it is a public safety, a public health issue, but it's also a public safety issue.
On private property.
And they are here. So that is what we can do if we don't. So if that, we'll close the public hearing unless there's other things to say and then we can move on to the motion. Thank you, sir. All right, if there's no one here to speak on item on this public hearing, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. City Manager, will you read item number ten?
Yes, ma'am. Counsel to consider an ordinance finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exists on the property owned by Gwendolyn Walden at seventeen ninety-two Broadway Street with the legal description of McFadden L. four through six, west four feet of three B eleven, and order the owner to abate public health nuisances within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff is requesting city council authorization to abate said property without further notification to the property owner of city council action. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Yes, sir. With that, is there a motion for item number ten?
Move to approve.
Is there a second on motion ten? There is a motion and a second for item number ten. Is there any discussion on item number ten?
I still think this is somewhat of an emergency as far as that water being there and that pool not being fenced in to where we have, I don't know if we can go to the judge or get permission, but we need to go in there as soon as possible, like tomorrow, today, if we can. That's very dangerous in our kids over in that neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay.
Staff have any response on the timing to be able to address to Councilman Durio's question?
I would need to look into it. I'm hesitant to enter someone's property without their, without a judgment. It's not to say that we can't maybe look at a building official side of it for unsafe structures or anything like that. I know that we've done a board and secure before, so let me look into it.
Because you have done like, they had a red tag house that looked like it was about to fall on another house and y'all done an emergency demolition of it, you know, right away?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm referring to. Let me look into that and I'll get you an answer.
Okay, the action before us now is to, we have a motion and a second on item number ten as it is presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, at this point, we're going to move into council comments and I'm going to start over with Councilman Crenshaw this time?
No comment.
Councilwoman Sherwood, thank you, Councilman.
I'd just like to thank everybody for all the thoughts and prayers and kind words and council members that showed up and offered their condolences. I'm grateful for the community and all the support. I appreciate it. If you've got time, I'd like to see people go out to this farmers market. Gardens are a big deal for me, so I'm excited about that. I'd like to see some information on how we cooperate with ICE and what our role is. I know we've got a limited jurisdiction on what cities actually allowed to do and things of that nature. But this ICE issue and detaining of U.S. citizens and it's creating some heartache and trauma and drama in my heart goes out to this community. As far as the tennis complex is concerned and it meeting national standards, I'd like to see what we need to do to make sure that we are presenting ourselves as a city in the best light, whatever that looks like and whatever costs may be associated with that. Thank you all. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo everyone else's comments here today and offer condolences to Councilwoman Sherwood. And congratulations to our new CFO. I know we're happy to fill that position and are thankful to Duncan for filling in while we were searching. And also congratulations to Miles on filling in in the economic development role. And Councilman Hillier, you might have me in trouble since you told everybody that I offer thirty days' credit on liquor, beer, and wine, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner?
Yeah, just I'd like to follow up with the encouraging everybody to go out on ten twenty-five to the Pumpkin Spice Event that Mr. Lala talked about at twenty-eight forty Glenwood. I hope we gave clear clarity on what direction we're looking to go in with the Water Bill Workshop. And if we didn't, we need to get clarity because I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly. The next thing is, normally we go by every structure, one by one. So to Ms. Demme's department, thank you because I've sat through almost two hours of structures and today we only did the ones that actually put forth, so I appreciate that. One thing I want to know, Mr. Williams, and you don't have to tell me today, but I want to know publicly, the tennis complex, what year was it built and how much did it cost? Can I get some history to how the tennis complex came about? And currently, is it considered a revenue generator or just a quality of life thing? I'd like to know that. The next council meeting, I don't want it emailed to me. I want somebody to tell me out loud. And lastly, I want to say thank you to the Kenneth Williams with the CFO appointment, also with the economic development appointment, just to be more efficient and utilize staff that's already existing and consolidate things to kind of make sure we have a healthy balance. Ms. Bridgen, I'm looking forward to it. I wish you nothing but success. You willing to step into a big role and I know you'll do good at it. I have nothing but confidence in you, Miles, and Mr. Raggett. So thank everybody for what you're doing, looking forward to working together. But I just wanted to know that because a lot of people have been asking me about that facility and I want to make sure I give accurate information. I want it to come from staff, not me.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Yes, Councilman Hillier, your comments?
Well, I would like to say my condolences for the loss of, a great loss. And I'm so sorry that you're having to go through this in your family and my heart goes out to you. And we, you're in our prayers every night, so. Also, the garden, I think this is wonderful. I would love to see this across the whole city to get back to what we used to be, learn how to plant and feed and not rely on grocery stores. But I think this is a neat thing and it brings a community together. And welcome to our new CFO. I haven't really had a chance to meet you, but I'm happy to see you sitting there. And thank you Duncan for what you did and Miles and Kenneth, congratulations. I think that you guys are going to do a great job. And so just so you know, Councilman Williams, I was just, I was just saying your commercial accounts, not your walk-in. So that being said, I know a company that can make tennis courts look. So, uh, that being said, uh, I, I, I know a company that can make tennis courts look really good at a very low price, so, uh, just throwing that out there.
It's pretty inappropriate.
But anyway, I, I, thank you guys, the city, the staff, Demme, y'all have done a wonderful job, especially we were, we were gonna have to go through all fifty houses, so, uh, you did a great job, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you, I said I know you were playing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want, on that, uh, I guess, I don't know who I would ask, but are the tennis courts in shape? That's what I wanna know, are they ready to have play this, this nationally televised, uh, Southland Conference Tennis Court there? We don't wanna be out there playing and, uh, with TV out there and it's looking raggedy and all that, so I, I would think we would have to get, uh, make sure that, I'm pretty sure they'll have them ready, but just, just make sure that we wanna, we really wanna show off Beaumont a, and that tennis court, and thank you, uh, oh, he's gone already, pass the shot, 'cause he's been bringing that to our attention for the last couple of months. Also, um, congratulations to the, uh, uh, the CFO, and I guess Miles really does have a staff now, and Mr. Raggett as well, you know? And I, just, just a reminder about the, uh, Farm to For, Farmers Market Saturday from, uh, it's from twelve to four, and it's gonna be at twenty-eight forty Glenwood Avenue, and, uh, Ms., uh, Delilah, she gave us all the invitation, she wanted us to be able to come out a little early if we wanted to, so just, uh, take advantage of that, and, uh, I'm gonna try to, uh, I might even buy a pumpkin, and, and I think she might have some fresh okra, so I'm gonna try to get some of that from her, too. But I think that's, uh, oh, and as far as the, uh, that, the people that came up and spoke about ICE, I don't know if it's anything we can or can't do about it, but it certainly is a concern to some of our constituents, and if nothing else, it's, at least we need to, to look into it, what are we doing? Uh, well, are we actually apprehending, uh, uh, people with ICE, or, 'cause it's, it's a concern, and anything that's a concern, I don't think we should just say it's nothing we can do about it, it's not our problem, if it's a concern for our citizens, then we at least need to look into it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, and just, uh, yeah, everybody keep a close eye on me, uh, my wife is out of town for the week, but I, I was able to get myself dressed for the meet.
You look very nice.
Thank you.
Appreciate you wearing clothes. City Attorney?
So I do wanna address the, the, the ICE's concerns, since it was brought up by several of our council members. Um, the ICE rates are generated by our federal government with the consent of our gov, our governor. Um, the House bill that was referenced by the citizen does not require, um, local police agencies to participate unless, um, unless they have a loc, in a local agreement with, with the sheriff's office, um, so that, that, or have a jail, um, that doesn't really apply to city, the city doesn't operate, our jail is a museum, um, and we contract with the county for jail services. Um, so, um, I, I understand that the citizens are concerned, it's a concern of our city, however, um, that really should be addressed to their state legislator and, and the governor, um, because there's really, there's really not a lot that the city can do. Um, we don't have authority over ICE agents, we can't put them out of the city, um, and, and Texas has, um, our, Texas has, has, you know, obviously, um, participated there, there are some cities, um, in other states who are, uh, essentially protesting, um, the presence of ICEs, and the government has, uh, there are several lawsuits, uh, that have been filed subsequent to that, because they do have a, have a authority to be here, um, pursuant to executive orders by the president, uh, so that's a, it's a very tricky situation. Um, uh, it's definitely sad that it's impacting, um, legal citizens and legal residents, um, and that, it's, and it's a shame that, that there's, that there's fear among those communities, um, but unfortunately, council doesn't have the authority, um, to impact, um, that. So I hope that, I hope that answers your question, as well as Council, Councilwoman Sherwood's question, uh, question, there's, we, we haven't, um, entered into any, uh, M U's or consent decrees, uh, with ICEs, because that's not a requirement for us, um, mostly because we don't operate a jail. Um, on another note, congratulations to Bridget, um, looking forward to continue to work with her, it's been a pleasure already, um, and also, uh, spoken with you privately, but you know, my heart, my prayers are with you and your family.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am, Ms. Villarreal, yes.
Before, sorry, Molly, because I know you're gonna say it, but also, uh, shout out to Lamar, uh, they won, they won again, uh, last Saturday, I hated I missed that game, but it was amazing homecoming game, and Lamar's on a roll, so if you haven't, uh, caught a game this season, you're missing out, 'cause, uh, Lamar's on a roll right now.
Go well you, that's it. So, uh, council, uh, Councilman asked about, uh, the schedule for the pipe bursting work that was discussed on the change order, so all of the work in the current contract is complete, so those fifteen days will, uh, they will start on the work that was approved today, uh, they'll start on that this week, and then that'll be fifteen days' worth of work. I do want to advise, though, that during the course of the constr, of the construction of the contract, uh, they've discovered that there's about twenty-five hundred feet of sewer pipe that, uh, was on the maps, was not in the ground, so we are going to redirect that work in the Magnolia and Grand area, and, uh, bring forward, uh, consideration to instead then do, since those pipes don't exist, pipe burst in that immediate area as well, the lines that we do know do exist that need to be replaced, uh, so there is gonna be good, more good coming, uh, to this area. Uh, to, uh, correct or, um, clarify an item that the district engineer mentioned, there is not a part on order for the signal at Washington and Interstate Ten, but there are electrical repairs that are needed. There is a meeting later this week with Tech Dot's electrician and their traffic engineer, and we'll get those repairs made. Once those repairs are complete, Tech Dot is going to give, uh, city staff the timings for those signals, and then we can put the signal back into service. I do want, again, and like, like she mentioned, I wanna make sure that we're clear, the traffic is going to move faster through those intersections in, when they're in flash, doesn't seem like it, but it actually does, and, uh, I had a lot of chatter back on, uh, uh, about that. So they're gonna try to optimize the timing of that signal, but it will be slower, but it will be safer to go through that signal, because like she described, it's not a perfect ninety-degree intersection, it is at a skew, and so to improve the safety, we'll put the signal back in service, but it will be a little bit slower to actually get through that intersection. And then one last thing, uh, the quiet zone construction is expected to start in early December, once all the contracts are executed, and we anticipate construction to be completed mid to late February, so, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Boone?
Yes, I just wanted to echo condolences to Councilwoman Sherwood and the loss of her sister, um, and congratulate Bridget, um, on her appointment to CFO. Of course, that, I'd like to thank Duncan for his work, uh, during the interim period, uh, congratulate Kenneth Raggett on his, uh, overseeing of built, facility maintenance, and then I would like to point out, uh, Miles Haynes, uh, being appointed the interim Economic Development Manager, so look forward to working, uh, with Miles on that, and that's, oh, Lamar University, fifty-seven yards, if you missed the kick, it was, it was something, that's all.
Thank you, yes. Uh, Assistant City Manager Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna extend my condolences to you, uh, Councilwoman, for your loss, and I would like to congratulate, uh, Ms. Evick, uh, being appointed as the city CFO, uh, you have my support always, as all city staff do, so I know you'll do well for the city. Uh, and Mr. Haynes, congratulations on your appointment, uh, as interim Economic Development Manager, uh, best of luck to you and all that you do for the city. And Mr. Raggett back there, who, uh, stepped up, uh, to, you know, take over the facilities maintenance, uh, division, now it's, it's no longer a department, but a division within his, uh, department, so I thank Mr. Raggett for, uh, stepping up and, uh, taking on that challenge. I would like to let, remind the council that this Thursday, uh, the city has our joint meeting with B I S D. It begins promptly at five P.M., uh, dinner is served at that time at the Lakeside Meeting Room, and then at six P.M., the meeting starts with B I S D next door in the auditorium. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Adam, CFO Evick? You're welcome.
Thank you, um, and thank you for your congratulations, uh, and condolences to Councilwoman Sherwood on the loss of your sister. Uh, I also wanna say congratulations to Miles and to Mr. Raggett for your promotions as well, and I am excited to work with you all and make some positive changes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll keep it quick, um, there was an item today to form a steering committee for the comprehensive plan that was pulled, um, I do apologize, I did not write it in a way that allowed for wiggle room due to internal deadlines to meet, uh, the posting requirements on, uh, this agenda, um, I had to post it prior to planning commission, so that's gonna be moved to the November fourth. If you guys could look at that list and let us, let me know by Friday, or let, uh, uh, city manager know by Friday if you need, if we need to amend anyone on that list, just so we can get it right for the November fourth resolution. Also, um, the comprehensive plan, just so you guys know, is a long-range, uh, plan, it covers, uh, planning, infrastructure, economic, uh, and, uh, housing goals, economic development and housing goals, um, and it's an outlook for about twenty years for the city. Um, it's a, a super high, uh, community engagement process, uh, it's about a year and a half long, um, so there's gonna be multiple voices, it's not just the steering committee, there's focus groups, there's town halls that happen with these kinds of plans. Um, I also wanna say that it is fully funded by a grant through the G L O, um, which is great, um, considering that our, uh, comprehensive plan is, uh, at about twenty years, um, the current one that we have. Um, and Able City will be introduced, they're our vendor that was selected, so they'll be introduced on the fourth with a brief presentation. Thank you, guys.
Yes, and City Clerk? City Manager?
Thank, thank you, Mayor, and likewise, what Councilmember Sherwood condolences there, uh, two lost, uh, older sister short time ago, and it, it's tough, so I understand what you're going through. Uh, a couple of things, uh, I'll just add to what, uh, City Attorney said about ICE, you know, immigration now, a lot of our grants are tied to cooperation with federal government now, and we accept those grants and sign those documents, now we're basically saying we're gonna, we're gonna work with them on these type issues, and now that's, that's the standard, that's the norm in doing that, so just remember that, as a city, you are committed to a lot of things that you probably didn't know, probably, it's, and it just didn't start, we, cities have been doing that for years, signing those agreements to accept those dollars, and those dollars will go away more than likely if you don't cooperate. But I would like to have police give a report to you about what we do, or what they do in this situation, I think that would be helpful. Um, a couple other things, do employees, it's good to, uh, I was gonna, uh, Chris and June were gonna introduce them, but everybody else got to it before that, so it's great, it's great to have them on board. It's even better to be able to promote within, uh, to have a good succession plan. When I came here, one of the things I would wanna do at organizational chart, and one of my goals with the employees was to be able for them to, uh, promote within and be able to. One of those times where we're able to do that, so it, it doesn't always work that way, so it was really great to see that happen, and people be rewarded for their hard work. Uh, we already made the announcement about the joint meeting, um, uh, I would like to thank the Beaumont Police Officers Association for their work in negotiating, uh, an agreement, uh, it was done very well, I'd like to thank, uh, President, uh, Llewellyn, A- Aaron Llewellyn and his group, uh, for a very, um, cordial, productive, uh, collaborative negotiation, that now there'll be something coming to council for your consideration, but first, it'll go to their membership for consideration, so we anticipate that coming soon, uh, to you as a, as a council after they, they consider it. The gardening, uh, event that's happening, the city is partnering with that, we are providing, uh, garbage containers, et cetera, for that event, they've contacted us and we are participating and, and giving them some resources to, to make them successful out there, uh, it's a great project, sounds like a great project. And, uh, last but not least, uh, Councilmember Williams, when I go through Ivanhoe, I will think about you when I'm going up to northeast Texas, and what you're giving away now at your store up there. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and again, Councilwoman Sherwood, we, our condolences, uh, I would like to remind people that early voting has started, and we'll continue with, uh, November fourth. Our, our next council meeting will be the day of election, I wanna thank all the staff for their hard work, uh, and the cardiac cards for their last, they've won five straight games, their last two games, uh, two weeks ago, they made ESPN on, uh, that, and then last week, winning with a fifty-seven yard field goal in the last minute, which is a lot of fun, and, uh, the crowds are growing, and certainly, congratulations, uh, to our new CFO, Ms., uh, Evick and Mr. Raggett and his expanded roles, and Miles for his interim appointment, those are exciting, and Thursday evening, we do have the joint meeting, and we certainly invite everybody back, and yes, Mr.
And I always wanna give you the last word, Mayor, but, but on the tennis court, this is not the first time we've, we're hosting this event, this will be the fourth time in the last eight years the city of Beaumont has he, hosted this event at our complex, so the complex has held that event, and, and, and the facilities and, and the participants have really, uh, thought well of it, so much so that they, they keep coming back and they wanna do it, so we're gonna make sure it's, it's, it's up to par, it's excellent, but the, the facility has hosted this event four times in the last eight years.
Well, and with that, uh, the meeting is now, uh, we are gonna recess into executive session, so thank you for being here.